Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming to our workshop on city-owned properties. I'll go ahead and call the workshop to order. First item is public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person is given up to five minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Don't be shy. Mr. Volz.
Good morning, counsel. For the record, Fred Volz. Given only four days to review, reflect, and then comment on almost 800 pages of facilities documentation generated over a year's time, it's really impossible to fully achieve in five minutes of time. It is disappointing that the public expected to pay for either $16 million or $52 million of changes, was never consulted for their input at any point while these plans were generated. It would have been helpful to have some sort of percentage range added on to the base costs for the nine excluded items on page 111 for a complete picture. It's also disappointing -- excuse me -- that past administrations allowed our civic infrastructure to deteriorate so massively, similar to the city utility system and pool. What steps and maintenance schedules will city management take to prevent similar deterioration from again happening in the future? City Hall received regular attention, but not most other facilities. As with residents and business owners, city staff may need to make do with what they have rather than move to new or materially renovated facilities. Of course, health, electrical, plumbing, roof, and ADA access issues require attention. The one-stop-shop facility the city manager claims we need might serve larger communities. We are a small town, not Las Vegas and not Beverly Hills. We reasonably expect to have city staff readily and directly accessible to meet our business needs. On the infrequent occasion, a new business person needs to consult with multiple departments, staff can come to meet with the person at the first city department someone might approach. There is no functional need for a one-stop-shop facility. City staff need not fear the public nor deem them an inherent security risk. One of the questions this study did not address is the seismic status of our buildings. The Elaine K. Smith Building was specifically cited for its lack of seismic reinforcement. Yet what about City Hall and the police department and their masonry facades? Have either been seismically reinforced? How about other city buildings, including the DWP Building? Perhaps the Elaine K. Smith Building should be sold if it is structurally and seismically unsound and the site developed into low-cost and/or senior housing by a developer with Section 8 expertise. We do not need a duplicate visitor's center in the DWP Building when interior runs one across the street. Co-location is a good thing. Perhaps the utilities, public works, and desired emergency operations center go to the DWP Building. This would free City Hall space. The need for record storage space surfaced in the facilities assessment for the city clerk, court system, and police. Why are we keeping paper records at the risk they might be destroyed in a fire when digital storage takes far less space and allows for off-site backup? The same applies for the city data center when public and private cloud computing capacity offers so many advantages. The $52 million facilities version calls for a new fire station at the city airport. Helpful in this discussion would be the number of fire incidents at the airport since its opening. The costs of a new fire station and equipment were not included in the November 2019 version of the Fire Year Capital Plan. With the existing fire station a five-minute drive from the airport, learning of the business necessity for a new station would be appropriate. Regarding City Hall and ADA access, the lack of interior elevator between the first and second floors could be solved with an exterior elevator, perhaps at less cost, and internal disruption between the upstairs park area and the lower level adjacent to the existing metal staircase. The possibility needs research. The same for a wheelchair lift along the side of the existing stairways between the main entrance and the first and second floors. To meet the police department's need for additional secured parking at its existing facility, why not wall off and gate the parking loop on the east side of South Escalante Park? This alternative would not restrict access to existing businesses or remove all public parking for those businesses. And I would ask, please, that my comments be added verbatim to the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Judy DeShane, excuse me. I read as much of it as I could read, and I was here at the historic preservation when they presented it here, so I had started reading it further ahead than when it was posted. But I -- the whole thing struck me, it's a lot of money, we're a small community, we're still struggling to try to afford a new swimming pool which would benefit more people. I agree with the fact that the police station needs to be re -- actually probably rebuilt. And Fred's comment about maybe doing away with the Elaine K. Smith and putting a new fire -- or police station there with the proper things that are needed would be a good location. It still makes them a central location here in the city and give them the facilities they need, because I do agree the police need better act -- or better facility with cells and whatnot. Sending anyone they detain to someplace else costs us money too, so that sounds like a good deal. The fire station, we just spent a bunch of money on the current fire station, and I would think that if we need a new fire station someplace, we would need it across the highway for the lakeside people. There isn't -- they have to wait for the firefighters and EMTs to come from the one on our side of the road. So I would think putting it on the other side of the road if we need one would be a better idea than down at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning. Ray Turner. Yeah, a few things I'd like to say. First of all, this whole thing started, as far as I remember, it all came about as a reaction to the pushback from the community over the ballot question to sell the hangar and the water filtration plant. The city manager announced that he was going to conduct a study, an inventory, is what I understand, studied to be an inventory of city-owned buildings in response to the backlash from the community. It's interesting to see that when it comes to the L.A. Water and Power Building, that the recommendations to move emergency aid out of there and the suggestion that the museum might move into the building and there'd be a visitor's center there echoes word for word the vision that Mrs. Leslie Woodbury shared with me five years ago at a historic preservation workshop. She told me it was her vision. This study started off with a visioning session, and it's interesting that the study came to the same conclusion as Mrs. Woodbury did five years ago. And also, at a council meeting, when confronted by the public regarding the suggestion and rumors that emergency aid would be moved out of the L.A. Water and Power Building, Mr. Woodbury, the previous mayor, said that it was lies and rumors, and yet here we are about two years later, and those lies and rumors seem to have found their way into this report and study. I'd like to say a few things about the water filtration plant. In the study, the water filtration plant's roof is described as being in fair condition. This means it needs attention and repair. That building got a brand-new roof in August of 2018, and it was done very professionally and by probably the best roofing company in southern Nevada. So I can't understand how the so-called architects and engineers that visited this property came to that conclusion. And I'm also wondering why there isn't a list of the people who gave their opinions. These architects and engineers -- excuse me -- and engineers are not listed in the report. There's so much to go over, and I don't have enough time, but one of the things that really, really disturbed me was I got a copy of this thing, and it's as big as this podium here. And on pages six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, I could not read the assessments. This is the assessment summary, and I couldn't read it. It was so tiny. And I have prescription glasses, and I'm like this trying to read it. Now, Stantec is an international company. They do studies like this, much bigger than ours. This is rumored to be a $500,000 study, and I have to go scrounging around my neighbors looking for a magnifying glass so I can read the most important part of the study. It's not by accident. It's, in my opinion, it's by design, and I'd like to see the city not do so many studies and surveys, because it seems that when the results come out, it's like word for word exactly what was proposed to begin with. And we have enough experts working for the city to come to the same conclusions that these people came to, and echoing Fred Volz, a lot of these pictures that you see of damaged walls and paint peeling and stuff like that, why is that happening when we have such a big staff, you know, public works, et cetera? You know, the maintenance is not happening. It's not being done, obviously. And, you know, if that -- you know, these buildings are not in terrible, terrible shape. Some of them just need to coat a paint and maybe change out a few fixtures. You know, we have people on staff that can do that. We don't need a $500,000 study to tell us we need to do that. It's an incredible waste of money, and I hope the council will find a way to send a message to the staff or whoever's responsible for calling for all these studies, because it seems like these studies are used as a tool to give cover to city manager, perhaps? I don't know. But they give cover, and it allows people to say, "Oh, the expert said we should do this. The expert said we should do that." Well, I'd like our experts that we're paying very well, and I'm assured they're very competent to give us some opinions instead of companies like Stantec.
Thank you.
Counsel, I wanted to use this just for a plea for the 300 railroad and the emergency aid. Many of us were disappointed and alarmed by the decision of the planning commission on January 15 not to recommend zoning 300 railroad avenue as a government park. In addition to the heartfelt pleas for years now from the neighborhood, there were many compelling and touching arguments that evening in support of 300 railroad avenue being designated as a government park area. I'd like to highlight some of what a Boulder city resident shared that night, a mechanical engineer. He had the privilege, like many of us, of taking the tour inside the plant when Boulder City History and Arts Foundation had one of their very popular tours, opening the plant up to the public. I'd like to echo some of what he shared. From an engineer's point of view, the plant is very simp -- is very simple, is a very simple effective design based on 2,000-year-old Roman water technology. It works down to 300 parts per million of water purification, which is in line with federal standards for the city, the size and population of Boulder City. He said, "It's a marvel from a completely technical standpoint." He goes on to detail why the structure is truly unique and special, and then asks an important question. "Why would anyone want to see the water filtration plant here?" He answers, "It's amazing what they did. It's inspirational from a technical standpoint." After elaborating, he closes with, "Just be aware from an engineer's point of view, this is very much a technical gem. I would hate to see it erased in some manner." So the question for us is, shouldn't we see the water filtration plant this way? Why wouldn't we want to advertise and highlight it as part and parcel with a visit to the Hoover Dam? Why wouldn't we make every effort to preserve it and keep it open to the public as a great place to visit in Boulder City? Why wouldn't we be interested in having historians like the Godby family, Dennis McBride, et cetera, make a film that could be shown and shared with visitors at the site? It's undisputable that folks of all ages would be interested in this. So why wouldn't we do this before it's too late? Lastly, in thinking about the emergency aid being housed in the water, to continue being housed in the water and power plant, there's a quote, "When the heart speaks, it's heard by those who have a heart." The building emergency aid is presently housed in is ideal for them. They're just doing fine there. That building meets all their many, many needs. As we have no affordable housing here, it's the best we can do to accommodate and cherish those who need assistance and not uproot them to accommodate someone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Tom Tyler. I'm president of Emergency Aid. This is like the fourth attempt to get the Water and Power Building. Years ago, Redmont Enquirer wanted to make an amphitheater out of it. There was a massive study on that feasibility. It was voted down because there was no parking, noise problems, et cetera. Water and Power is right next to the most busy intersection there is in town, almost. Also, there's no parking except from one way, and it's inconceivable for me to move the museum from the hotel to that location. When I talked to the museum, they estimated it would cost them $3 million to move. And as I recall, when we did the museum, the Woodburys raised tons of money so that the museum could keep the hotel alive. And now the hotel wants to move to Water and Power and put hotel rooms in there? I mean, the hotel is the jewel of our historical area, and the museum was there to keep the hotel alive. And two, you know, the hotel is not owned by the city. How was that even in the study? You know, I don't understand that. You know, emergency aid, you know, does a lot for the community. And frankly, where we're located along the Nevada Highway is where all our clientele is, and most of our clientele walk. We have, you know, it -- I don't know. I feel too strongly on this subject, frankly. I mentioned it a year ago that this was going to happen. A couple of years ago before that, Allen Goya approached me for -- and the city took me to several different buildings. He was mentioning that Musk might have had some money for a museum in that building, and they wanted a welcome center. After that, it was last year when the report came out, you know, I started screaming, "The sky is falling," and I was assured that nothing would happen. And here again, a year later, you know, we're approaching it again, you know? And I'm tired of saying this, you know, "The sky is falling." You know, we're -- we put $150,000 back in the community. I mean, we bring money in. I mean, you know, even the money from the city that gives us is from a federal grant that they're supposed to distribute. Through grants and that, you know, we put almost $150,000 back into the community, and that's through utilities. So we're paying for utilities. We're also, you know, helping with rents, which helps the landlords and stuff. We have the only food bank. You know, I need a doc. I've gone three different times looking at different buildings, and I've told them what they want, and I've even given them suggestions where we can move. But, you know, we're all kind of limited, and, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that emergency aid continues. It's 50 years or whatever we've been helping the community. We're very unique. The community helps itself. And, you know, the homeless, you know, we have 200 square miles. There's going to be homeless because people live out in the desert. You know, we have one of the safest cities in Nevada, as according to the police chief. And obviously, we don't need a new police station if we're having the safest city in, you know, Nevada. I'm just saying. You know, we want no growth. Not no growth, but, you know, limited growth. And that's been explained to them over and over again, and yet all our plans are for a big city in the future. Now, I know it's their job to want for the future, but when are they going to listen to the people that we want limited growth and we want to, you know, serve the citizens? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Deborah Finnegan. I am the treasurer of Emergency Aid. First of all, as a taxpayer, I thought the almost $500,000 is ridiculous. We have 17,000 people here. It's just, I thought it was going to be an inventory thing. And not to say everything that Tom said, I agree with everything he said, and Ray was excellent too. In the last -- this is my report. I have a computer problem this morning, so I was trying to get some figures. From July 1st to today, we spent $53,000. And when they say we give back to the community, $40,000 was almost in rent and mortgages to keep people in their homes, to stop homelessness, 40 repairs, house repairs. We do very little, you know, we're getting this bad rap lately about lodging. We do very little to keep -- to have people stay in lodging. We get police calls, and by the way, Officer Shea, first police chief that's ever since I've been with Emergency Aid, has come and visited us at least three times. He's wonderful. We have a lot of people, all of you know what we do. I just feel like we do such a service for this company, for this town. You know, it, like Tom said, we're the heart of the community. You don't realize it. We have seniors that use the pantry. We have young moms that are single that aren't getting child support, that we buy school supplies, or Roger can tell you, we pay for their kids to play baseball or something like that. I just feel that in this report, the one word that's -- and I didn't read the whole report, yeah, I forget it, they had all this stuff. I'm not that computer savvy, anyway. That word "underutilized" just drove me crazy. We help over 300 people every single month, and I just, you know, it's a buzzword. You know, I remember when I was in banking, you know, everything was proactive. Well, now it's "underutilized." I just want you all to think about this. And Ray's absolutely right. I've been talked to, I've been taken to buildings, you know, people have been talking about making that a museum, doing that for years. You know, it's six years, even more, so I just want to share that I think it's the heart of the community, and thank you all for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, and don't feel bad about not having read the entire report. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Last chance. Okay, we will close public comment then and begin with the report. I see that Keegan has sent Mr. Keen to the podium.
Mayor and counsel, good morning. I'm Jim Keen. I'm your city engineer, and we're here to give you a short presentation on the report, the draft report that we've put together. The project started out as a city hall improvements project. We put out an RFP to select an architect or firm to help us look at City Hall and figure out ways to improve access, safety for residents and for staff, and just overall better use of City Hall. As we were going through the interviews of the firms, Stantec stood out, and that's who we selected. And one of the reasons they stood out is because they've done facilities assessments for other communities. So we decided to expand the project from just City Hall to other city facilities. So, and with that, I'd like to introduce two members from Stantec who will give you the presentation, and then once they're done, we can open it up for discussion and questions and answers. So we have Wendy and Sidney from Stantec here.
Thank you, and welcome to them.
Thank you. I'm Wendy Weiskopf with Stantec, interior designer and facilities planner.
And I'm Sidney Hamilton, also with Stantec. Should we just go and get started? Thank you all for coming. I appreciate so much the investment that you have all made to come in the middle of the day and have even glanced at this.
If you wouldn't mind redirecting the microphone, thank you. We want to make sure that it gets picked up.
Absolutely. I understand. So I -- you have all made an investment to be here. You took the time to look at a very large report, and it sounds like a very short amount of time, so thank you so much for doing that. I would like to just tell you what we're going to talk about today. We're going to talk about the goals of this study. We're going to talk about the process and the methodology that we used when we conducted this, our findings, and then our recommendations to the city. The goals that were set forth at the beginning of this study were first, to honor the historic significance of all buildings in Boulder City, or in the scope of this study, I should say, to create some version of the concept of a one-stop-shop in an accessible location to the customers of the city, obviously maximizing the use of the city's resources, financial and capital, improve adjacencies where they could be improved, optimize the use of existing buildings, especially, most importantly, the safety and accessibility, improve the operations and customer service, and then improve the city image and first impressions. There were two parallel tracks in this study, and I want to point out that this was the first step. The next step, which is part of our recommendations, is to begin the public input process. By no means was this meant to be excluding anyone. This is essentially a research gathering study so that we could create informed sets of data for presentation to the public, to the historic commission, so that the -- so that you have the ability to make more informed decisions for the next steps. Got it. Thank you. I'll have to look and see what I'm presenting. So there were two parallel tracks. The first was a facility assessment, which is a physical assessment of the facilities that were identified by the city to be assessed. So we were looking at the structural, architectural, mechanical systems, those kinds of things, physical conditions. The second set was looking at how they were being used and operated, and then those two things informed each other in the recommendations that we put forth. As you've already heard, there was a visioning session held at the beginning. Those goals that I just mentioned came from the RFP and the visioning session that we held, a combination of those two things. Then we took care of data collection and analysis, and we took -- we did surveys to city staff. We did interviews with those heads of departments, and then we did historic research. We did demographics research. There was a whole slew of efforts for the data gathering, and then the analysis included looking at utilized space, looking at vacant space, calculating physically the net and gross square footage of the buildings and departments that we were -- that were in our scope. We took all that data. We put forth lots and lots and lots of options. Those of the city staff who were at the first of the two workshops will recall, we sort of threw every possibility at the wall and started to eliminate those possibilities that absolutely wouldn't work either. Functionally, they didn't make sense in that location, or there wasn't enough square footage, or there was too much square footage, anything that really made no sense, and we whittled it down. Then we compared those against the city's goals and priorities, and that helped us put forth a set of priorities to bring -- to take to the next set of workshops. We took those back to our office. We massaged this a little more. We figured out which square footages would make the most sense. We took the new ideas that came out of that workshop, and then we went to the second workshop, further refined those alternatives, and that's and that's where we ended up with the set of alternatives, a set of recommendations, excuse me. I do want to touch on some of the data that came out of the initial data gathering and the surveys that we did with the city. At the time of the survey, 71% of the current employees in the city are 45 or older. That is a little higher than average for most civic organizations, although it is not that unique. Civic organizations tend to have an older workforce. Less than 10% of the workforce here was, at the time, was under 35, and more than 15% were actually over retirement age. That is a unique statistic to this community. And again, this is city staff, not, not the community. Of those surveyed, 70% of the respondents felt that the reason that staff had grown in recent years, or was predicted to grow in the next 10 years, was due to the way that we are changing service delivery. And this is very common throughout the nation, every study that we have done, and we've done, I mean, I've been doing this for 10 years. Service delivery is a driver of change in how staffing is provided in every municipality that we've worked with. So, new programs and changing staff were driving, and changing service delivery, excuse me, were driving the staff growth, and 70% of people agreed. Again, this is a look at the years of employment within the city. Significant number of people have been here a very, very long time and are very invested in this city and care a lot. We, that was remarkably noted when we first started working on this project. 70% of the current space, 70% of respondents, excuse me, felt that the current space did not facilitate service delivery to the best of its ability. And 90% of respondents said that there was not an adequate mix of space types. So what we're talking about here is the ability to meet with customers in a secure but public location, the ability to have meetings within the city staff, the ability to have spaces that are appropriate for public meetings like this, so a mix of the right kinds of spaces. 40% of respondents felt that they were not currently in the best location for the population served, but 90% felt that they were in the best location relative to each other. So that speaks a little to the goal of improving adjacencies, that was on that second slide. So, we quickly learned that we wanted to maintain relationships between departments, physical locations between departments as much as possible. So, essentially trying to keep people in as close to the current location as they are as possible, whether that's staying in the downtown area or literally staying in their current location. And this is, you know, this is an interesting problem, right? If you're, if you're in the right place for the people that you work with, but not in the people, not the people you serve, how do you address that problem? So that became a really interesting challenge for this project. I want to touch on some of the gap analysis problems that we, this was, this was part of that data gathering that we did. The airport administration currently has the greatest deficiency, but they have the smallest percent of overall space in the study, and you can kind of see that, let me see if I can get this to work. Is that my button? There you go. It's not going to work on the screen, but you can see the top right graph, I know it's very hard to read on these tiny screens. The airport administration makes up 3% of the total space in the study, and yet, they have a 236% deficiency. So you have to make sure, you know, whenever you're reading statistics, you have to take them with a grain of salt. And that's why we're putting these side by side, so you understand that their deficiency is great for themselves, but it makes a very small difference overall to the city and to this study. The other significant deficiencies that we noted were the Public Works and Utilities Maintenance Group, they, they're, frankly, they've outgrown their facilities. And the fire department, which has already been discussed, was mainly, their, their space need deficiency was mainly related to the Emergency Operations Center, which we categorized under that set of data. Their square footage was calculated with the fire department, and then having a satellite station somewhere, that was the second set of that. Overall, the deficiency, though, is relatively small. Over 10 years, we're looking at 27,000 square feet of growth space needed overall. The building assessment portion, we were tasked with assessing 50 of the city-owned buildings. We found that most of them were in fair or good condition. We did identify seven that were in very poor condition, and one, which is the golf, the Boulder Municipal Golf Clubhouse, right, is in, we found that to be in excellent condition, which is, makes sense, it's new. We are going to touch on these buildings in this presentation, and that's not to say that we can't talk about others, certainly willing to discuss anything that you want to discuss, but I want to talk about these seven specifically. These were the findings that came out of the report for these seven buildings. Most of the ones we're going to talk about were assessed to be in good condition. I want to make the point that the physical condition of a building might be good, but the use that's in that building might be very poor. So, for example, and we'll talk about this, while the police station physically is in very good condition, which is why we're recommending, recommending that the city keep it and maintain it, what function is located in there is not really appropriate for that building anymore. And so, the physical condition and the recommendation might not always seem to match, and that's why, because use and physical condition are not the same thing. So City Hall, we found it to be in good condition. We're recommending that the city keep and maintain this building in its current use. It does need some significant renovations in order to be appropriate as a city, as a public building moving forward. As you know, national building standards have changed, not just standards, code requirements have changed, and this building currently does not meet the requirements. So if the city wants to make this building meet those requirements, it's going to need to address some of the safety and accessibility concerns in this building, and we'll talk about some of the specific ideas that we have for that. The police department, again, it's a great building, it's beautiful building, it's in excellent condition, it's a historic structure. The recommendation that we want to make is intended to open that building back up to the public, make it more of a public space, make it more accessible, and then put appropriate functions back in it. The LED WP, again, beautiful building, gem for this city, is such a great building. We want to keep and maintain it. We do have some recommendations for that building, as everybody's already touched on. That's apparently going to be a very hot topic. The rec center, we have no recommendations for changing that building. It's in great shape, it's working really well for the functions that are in it, it's got great public access, it's very well-used, perfect, no change recommended there, we love it. The Elaine Smith Building, it's not in very good condition, some of you've already noted that the report touched on some of the seismic concerns, and it was explored for other uses, and we did not find an appropriate city function for that building. So we are recommending that it be kept and maintained for the short term, but we think it should be kind of put on the back burner for something to do, something else to do with it later. The filtration plant is, again, a gem of a structure, but it is not, it's, it's not being used to its best potential right now. We would love for the city to keep and maintain that building. When we say repurposed use, we're not necessarily saying, like, stick a brewery in there. You could open it to the public if you made it safe for the public to visit, and it could stay a building in its current state that doesn't house anything, if the city thinks that that is appropriate. We're not making a recommendation for that, we're just saying that could be done. The problem becomes, how do you obviously pay for the ongoing maintenance? You have to come up with some financial model that makes it viable to keep that building, maintain it, and hopefully make it open to the public, because right now, it's, there's a beautiful garden outside of it, and that's wonderful, a great community amenity, but it's only getting you part of the way there. So something more needs to be done, we feel. And the question is that financial model. We think this would be a great candidate for some kind of public input process. We obviously want public input on all of the recommendations, we think that that is the next step after this report. But that project in particular, we think would be a great project for an open RFP of ideas, things that you could do. We've seen other communities do that. Golden Colorado, which is just west of Denver, recently had an open solicitation for one of their historic properties. We worked with the city of Aspen on a facilities master plan a few years ago, they ended up doing that with one of their historic facilities. So it's a great, it's a great benefit, because you get ideas you wouldn't have otherwise gotten. There's a, really, I was just talking to someone in the audience about a facility in Pittsburgh that's an old steel stack, and the steel stack is preserved and maintained. The physical building, I don't believe, is open to the public, but it is now the backdrop for an open-air music venue. So there are lots of things that you can do with these structures that don't involve converting them into some new commercial use. You can preserve them, you can maintain them, and you can make them work financially, it is possible. And then, the final building would be the courthouse. It's in good shape, it's working well, it's in the right location, it is, it will, in the next 10 years, be too small for the functions at Easta House, so we would like to see an addition built onto that building. So we'll talk a little bit about some of those buildings more specifically. This building, as I mentioned, we're recommending that it remain the City Hall, that most of the functions stay here. It does need some required renovations in order for it to move forward as a modern, public, democratic building. The recommendations we're making, and I want to note that the walls that you see in this drawing are the existing walls, we're not, these are not designs. We are just simply putting together a diagram of overall sections of space. But the idea that we put forth, and we discussed this with city officials as well, is that the south end, at the lower level, could be opened up to become a, what we're calling the one-stop shop. So it's a reception area, it has a central zone for sort of check-in purposes, it has cross-trained either technology or personnel who can take any public visitor who walks into the building, whether you need to pay for a permit, whether you need to pay a bill, whether you need to have drawings reviewed for a code review, any of those things, they can get you started in that process. They are cross-trained among various departments in the, in the city. That's your first stop. And then, rather than sending that person into the building where they might get lost, might not know where they're going, might end up having to go to multiple departments, we've all experienced that, the city staff come down to the one-stop shop. There are smaller rooms where you can sit and have a consultation if you need to, if you need to do a plan review that's going to take, you know, a little bit more time, if it's more than just a quick financial transaction, for example. This also does not preclude the public from going into the rest of the building. It's just that first stop, that first secure entrance, so that, what it does, and we, this has been a very successful model in other municipalities, it allows the building to remain an open, public, welcoming center of democracy without having strangers wandering through the building. And that is unfortunately a very real concern in modern day. And as, as much as we hate it, and as much as we wish it wasn't, it is. And so, the, the question of how do you remain a democratic building, an open building, while also being secure, is a very, it's a very tricky problem, and this is one very successful solution that we have seen in other places. So it, it just allows for a welcoming but secure presence, and it also helps with a lot of the transactions and makes things simpler for the customer. It eliminates the number of doors you have to knock on, it eliminates the confusion of not knowing which department can help you. There's one person who can give you 75% of the answers you need right up front, and then you go to the next step if you need to go behind those doors. And again, it's, there's nothing saying that the people can't still come into the building, the rest of the building. People can still go visit the city manager in his office or her office in the future. This area, this room right here, which is currently, it's, it's, it's making do as the council chambers, but it has its problems, mostly security and accessibility. It is a little bit undersized for some of your meetings. I know that you have meetings where people are sitting in the hallway and having to watch on TV, and that's not ideal. We don't want to plan for Easter Sunday, but we do want to accommodate the majority of your meetings, and you, this build, this room has gotten to the point where it's not, it's too small. So this area and this idea would be converted into a series of conference rooms, potentially a new break room, the break room could be relocated, things like that. Most of the departments would stay in the building, as you can see here. We've also proposed a couple of different options for an interior elevator. I, I noted the ideas about exterior elevator, which are certainly worth considering. But we've got two options here, the two blue squares, where an interior elevator could be located. It would maintain the current entrance here, it would also be accessible to what would become the new entrance at the south end, and it would be able to address, this building essentially has four floors, because it's sort of a split-level building. So, this elevator solution would be able to pick up the lowest level, the center stair entry level, and this level, and then ramps would take care of the two levels on the lowest floor. And there is enough distance in that lower corridor to accommodate two ramps with, and meet code. This is just a diagram of how the south end could be opened up, so there would be sort of a plaza entrance on that lower level. This fire escape that's on the second story is not original to the, it was, it was added in the 40s, it's not historic, it's not part of the original design. So we believe that this concept could actually return the building to more historic state, and that little bit of brick could be restored there. And then that south end of the building would be opened up. The trees that are there could also potentially be maintained right where they are, they wouldn't necessarily need to be torn out. And we think that would be a nice way to address the south end of this building and make it a little more open. Police Department, we have noted that this building is in good shape, but it is not working as a police department's building anymore. They are functioning remarkably well in this building, given the condition of this facility. You are a very safe community, and that is due in no small part to the work that this police department does. They are working with subpar facilities. I'm joking in a little bit, literally, some of these basement facilities, they're flooding on occasion, they are, they're, they're, they're really working hard to make this building work for them, on top of having to do a very important job of keeping this community safe. So we think that, that, that is, that is not a function that should have to make do, right? The police department really needs to be in the right facilities. So we are recommending that this building be maintained, but that the police department move to a new location. We would like to see this building become the new home for the council chambers. It's right across the street, it's got great public access, this would actually return it to its more historic state, because all these interior walls and what we're showing is the new council chambers were added later. This, this space was originally a great hall, and we would like to see it returned to a great hall. This would also provide far more public access to this building than they're currently able to accommodate. It provides better safety and security for the city council, it provides a second exit for you if needed, it provides you with a council chamber, anteroom, excuse me, it provides better accessibility for the public. And then the recommendation came out of the second workshop, which we had not considered until the city brought in the idea that the city clerk should move over there. And again, this accentuates the public access to that building, because the city clerk, in addition to being the keeper of this council chamber, they receive all, quite a few public visitors. So this would open that building up to the public even more, and we think that's a great synergy, so they would move over there. This would provide them with the needed storage space and staff expansion that they need, and then also gives the council chamber the square footage that it needs. Okay, the LED WP building, this building, again, is a gem for the city. It's one of the very first buildings that you see when you cross into the historic district of the city. As such, we think that it should receive better public access than it currently has. It does have great public access, but it's limited to the clientele, it's limited to the type of people who need to go to that facility right now. We would like to see it become a welcome center. We absolutely do not want to put Emergency Aid on the street. We have some recommendations, and we would want the city to work with them to find a new location. It sounds like that's already been discussed a little bit. We do think that that is a good idea. We would recommend that they say. We would recommend that they stay in a central location. They would need a dock, all those kinds of things, we think that that can be achieved. But we think that this building is not currently serving its best and highest use. The filtration plant, we've already touched on a little, I'm not going to restate all the things that are restated, but we think that it needs, it needs a little love. It's a building worth saving, it just isn't quite, it's not benefiting you as well as it could. And I'll leave it at that. So the outcomes of the study, we feel are that we have provided some ideas that maintain and honor the exterior architecture of everything while modernizing the interiors and providing better access to the city. I do want to just briefly touch on the fact that we presented to the Historic Preservation Committee a couple of weeks ago. They also noted that this is now the time for public input, and we agree. And then they wanted us to better highlight the historic facilities, so we'll be working with the city on how to do that in the report. And I don't know if this is the time for public comment, or I'll let you direct that. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from city council? Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I guess let me just start from the kind of the beginning, this obviously started happening long before a lot of the council here, was it? So general history of the study, I know Mr. Keen had stated this started off as a assessment for the city hall building and then was later expanded. So this, overall this study, was this approved by a vote of the council?
Councilmember, yes, it was.
And then?
Just a little more information on that, it was a consent agenda item in December of 2018. Consent agendas, no discussion.
I just want to make sure, because there have been questions from the public about the history of this, so I just want to make sure that information gets out. Was this put out to bid?
Councilmember, it was not put out to bid, this was a selection of a professional firm, so it went out to RFP, request for proposals. And then we staff evaluated the proposals, did interviews, selected StanTech as the best firm, and then we negotiated a contract with them.
Thank you. And then, just, so we have just the total cost, what was that total cost?
I don't have the exact number, but it was like $488,000.
Thank you. I read there in the initial process, it was comprised of an initial advisory team. Could you, who was on those initial advisory teams?
It was staff, mostly the department heads, I was on there as well, and our Public Works Superintendent and our facility supervisor.
All right. And then it noted user group interviews, who were the, what were the user groups? Were those just the, from city, or were they users of other buildings that might not necessarily be officially part of the city?
The user groups are the departments in the city.
Thank you. All right, so I guess I'll get kind of into some more general questions about this. A lot of the suggested uses that were presented in this have been recommendations that we've heard for quite some time, for years going on that predated this study. So I'm kind of wondering how some of those, such specific recommendations came to be found in this, in the study?
So most of the ideas came from, either they were our own ideas, for example relocating the police, that came from our internal workshop. All of our ideas that were presented at the two workshops were presented to the advisory committee that was addressed earlier. Some of those ideas came from those. The suggestion to relocate the museum, for example, did come from one of those. I don't remember who came up with the idea. It's obviously that that idea had been floated before, it was something that was in people's minds from years past, so that's how it came forward. I truly do not believe that it was planted. None of this was meant to be secretive or, you know, sneaky. I don't believe it was planted, but it was an idea. And I think what's interesting is that there were other ideas that were presented, probably ideas that had also been floating around the city for other reasons, and they were not recommended. So the point I'm making is that some of the ideas that maybe had been around before, we felt were good ideas, and so they were almost being, it was like they were being validated by a third party in some way.
All right, thank you. And then the contract was entered in December 2018, it's now February 2020. What did take so long? I know the history was kind of, you know, it started off as one thing and changed, but you know, there's been a lot of questions as why this took so long to get this study. Could we get some answers on that?
There was a lot of work that went into this. They had a team of four or five people that went into each of these facilities to do the inspection, so that took quite a bit of time. Then we had two visioning statements, or sessions, I'm sorry, not statements, sessions, where we had to coordinate all of the department heads and whoever else we needed to be there. And then it was drafting the report and fleshing out all the ideas. We went through a survey process that all the departments filled out these surveys, that took some time as well, so it's just.
And then, how was the quality assessed overall? Because I noted when I was kind of going through there that it seemed inconsistent maybe from building to building, what one would say was fair, it would be maybe good and something else. Like specifically, I saw the multipurpose building had the parking listed as fair, saying that it was limited, but then the Parks and Rec Center said that it had good parking, but right in front of the multipurpose room, I mean, it's basically a giant parking lot through there. So I'm kind of trying to wonder how each quality was assessed across the board.
I can talk a little bit lightly on that because I was not the author of the assessments report, although we did, you know, obviously we worked together with that team. Generally speaking, the overall assessment of a building has to do with, you know, if you sort of add up all of the individual pieces, if the structure of the building is great, but all of the mechanical system is poor, then the building might be related, rated as fair. So it's sort of an averaging, there, some of it is very quantifiable, some of it is qualitative. And so they're experts at this. The goal of the assessment report is not only to rank the building, but also to help the facilities managers prioritize the maintenance that needs to take place, and then also to create a very quantifiable list of capital improvement needs. So it's, for lack of a more specific answer, it's an averaging effect.
All right, thank you. And I guess I was maybe talking more specifically about specific things as they were listed, but even something like the pool, I noticed was borderline poor quality. It does have a lot of good qualities and fair qualities in there, but of course, the few pores that are in there are big and major. And so that creates kind of a use, I think everybody here knows, we are very interested in what is going on at the pool right now. I noticed some, I mean, this is just small little nitpicking maybe, but historic significance, how was that determined? Because I noticed like the old airport hangar initially was listed as being not historically significant, but then I looked at the other thing, it did list it as being historically significant. So I'm just curious, what was determined to kind of qualify the historic significance?
No one on the team was a historic preservation expert, it was primarily driven by input from the city.
And then there's a lot of talk about the Colorado Street Building, potentially for the police department, Public Works, emergency aid, are we talking about all of them potentially using this? Is it good for one? What's, I mean, that's kind of, it just seemed that every time we were talking about finding a new building, it was that Colorado Street Building. So are we talking about everybody going into that one, or is that just one for the police department? And so I guess I'm kind of trying to understand, is everything going, or not, is everything, but is that what is being recommended?
So we looked at a number of options for the police, including building a new facility, renovating the facility where they currently are housed. That option was determined to be the most financially feasible. It was more expensive, way more expensive to renovate their current building, and more expensive to build new, which is, shouldn't come as a surprise. The building has more square footage than they need, so once we decided that that was the best recommendation to make for the police, the discussion turned to, what do you do with that surplus space? And the recommendation is that it be explored for those other uses. So there is good reason to consider it for the EOC, because co-locating with police makes a lot of sense. There's also good reason to consider putting the EOC far away from the police. Putting it at the airport is worth considering. There are also reasons that putting an EOC at an airport where planes could land on it is not a great idea. So there are pros and cons to lots of different locations. As I mentioned, this is the first step. This study was to kind of lay the groundwork for the next set of input, and that's why some of the recommendations are, consider these options, and not necessarily full, final recommendations.
And then I have more questions about the specific buildings, did other people have questions they wanted to go through first, or should I just go ahead and go down my list as I have them right now?
I would say go ahead and finish your list.
All right. So the multipurpose building, I noticed, like I said, mentioned earlier, the parking is listed as fair, but however, as I said, the entire, everything in front of that building, if you walk out of it, it's just, it's all parking. So I'm kind of not necessarily understanding how that was listed as fair versus the parking in front of, at say, the Parks and Rec, which got good, which is quite limited in space.
So the assessment was of the condition of the parking, not of the use of the parking. So they were looking at, you know, does the striping meet code? Does the pavement have cracks that need to be repaired? Has it had recent repairs that are failing already? You've probably been in parks that have those like asphalt tape repairs that aren't working. So it's not related to the use, it's not related to the amount, it's not related to, you know, it's purely, purely physical and code. That's how it was ranked.
And then it had the electrical panel there, it had, both listed as fair and good, were both selected on there, is that? And then there was, throughout a number of different areas, I would notice that there would be two selections, like in the Parks and Rec area where fair and good were both selected. What, are you able to clarify, is that there were multiple things that were, that they were trying to address?
Yeah, I cannot answer it specifically, I did not do the electrical assessment, we had engineers. And for the record, all of the engineers and architects that were involved with this are listed, full names, and our companies are on like the third page of the report. The, my guess would be that the panel had good wiring, but maybe the wiring to the building was, was poor or something. So it was, in most cases, the comments that are noted to the side explain why there might be two dots ranking good, fair, whatever. But if not, we can always pose the question to the electrical engineer, or whoever the assessor was, and get a little more clarification if we need it. But that would be my guess.
And that was just, you know, what I was trying to clarify in my own head was, trying to get that. And then overall, the building was rated good. Obviously, in the discussion for the pool, it had been previously talked about potential demolition. Given that it did have such a great rating, do you think it would be then reasonable that we try to incorporate it into our plans rather than potentially demolishing it to make space? Obviously, it'll all depend on plans, but with the good building, you would think you'd want to maintain its use potentially?
If, yeah, if the building is in good condition, we would likely recommend keeping and maintaining the physical building. Again, what use remains in it might be up for debate, and that's why we think this is a great time to go to the next step and start soliciting other input.
And then the water filtration plant, you know, some of the words in there, it said no suitable uses, but then versus, it also said to find alternative uses. It said that we need to find ownership strategies, but then it also, you know, says to keep and maintain. So there's kind of a lot of contradicting statements right there. Are you able to kind of clarify what all those means and why, you know, why, how can you have no suitable uses but also be able to find alternative uses?
Yeah, that's a really good point. So the scope of our contract was to find suitable city uses, and I definitely should have better wordsmithed that phrase. So there were no suitable city uses for that building, meaning we looked at potentially, you know, moving other departments there, we looked at putting the city council chambers in there, we looked at, again, we threw all the ideas at the wall. Some of them were terrible and were eliminated very quickly, like that one. But we did not want to have any preconceived notions going into this, so we said what if for any possibility that came to our minds. And so, but it was for city functions. So the, to clarify the point, no suitable city functions were identified for that building. We do think that the city should maintain ownership of the building, and I guess by ownership strategy, I'm talking about a financial mechanism. How does the city continue to keep that building and pay for it? How do you do that?
And then, I think as was stated before, the roof was rated as fair. It said that the BUR, I guess that's, the BUR needs replacing once it was reactivated, but the BUR was completely replaced with single ply, a single ply roofing system. And we just got a brand-new roof put on in the summer of 2018. So how can we have a fair quality roof when we got a brand-new roof just, you know, within the last year and a half?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would have to defer to the person who did the assessment. My guess would be that the assessment might have been done before the roof was put on, but based on the numbers you're giving me with the dates, that doesn't quite jump. So I don't know the answer to that, I'd have to defer to the person who did the assessment.
Yeah, because I believe it was August of 2018, I think, was when it was done, so it would have been before.
That would have been before the assessment was done.
Floor was rated poor, but there was no deficiencies noted, so it was just kind of, you know, it said potentially, it said maybe lead paint, so just, does lead paint make it poor quality, or, you know, I'm just?
Possibly.
Okay. I know you didn't, I know you didn't do this, but I'm just, I just kind of want to be sure because these are a lot of the things that I'm trying to get through.
I appreciate that.
And then discoloration was noted on the masonry, do you know if that's emblematic of structural, or is it purely aesthetic issues what we're talking about?
It could be a number of things. It could be effluent, which is a chemical process by which mineral matter inside the brick can start to leach out. Yeah, I don't know specifically what the discoloration is referring to, but it could be any number of things. I doubt that it was just aesthetic.
And then LED WP, obviously, this one's near and dear to a lot of people. And maybe this is a morally rhetorical question, but what is a higher, better use than providing emergency support for our community that helps prevent perpetual poverty cycles, that helps prevent homelessness? I mean, what is a higher and better use for any building?
That's a great question. That service is obviously wonderful, and the city supports it, the city wants to continue to support it, we want the city to continue to support it. You know, your body needs food, your bathroom isn't necessarily the best build, the best room in your house for eating. So just because the service being provided is morally wonderful and necessary, that doesn't mean that absolutely any building in the city is the best building for that use. That building being a historic building, being one of the first buildings that you see when you cross into the historic district. We think that a use that is reaching more of the public would be more appropriate for that building, and we think that that service should be housed somewhere else that is equally accessible to customers. It still provides all the functions that that service needs. There are other areas in that building that are not part of emergency aid, so we think that the building could be better utilized in a more comprehensive way. In the report, we recommend the current auditorium space that's there could stay that and be better utilized for more performance type or more meetings, whatever, more assembly functions. So that's a lovely question, and I appreciate it very much.
And then, so how does, because it does mention in there wanting to maintain Red Mountain Choir's position there, how does Red Choir Mountain, which, another great nonprofit here in the city, I'm not trying to bag on them, but how do they help fit the best and highest use for that building?
Because the building has a performance space, it was intended for that, a gathering space, I should say. Just as your mission is purposed, that building was- Just, just as your mission is purposed, that building was purposed for certain functions. It was not originally purposed for any public visitors, frankly, but now it's historic and it should receive more, we believe. And then there is a performance area, a gathering space in that building which was purpose-built.
No, and it's an absolute beautiful little auditorium space. And I've, I've personally used it a number of times for, for a number of different performances. That's, that's my profession. I'm a performer and stuff.
We think it could be a worship space. It could be a multipurpose assembly space.
Think, I mean, really, I mean, if you, we could put dimmers on those lights and then I think that space would be 100%. But I really think it is great. With, with the Elaine K. Smith Center, it really is our only large community gathering space right now. But we're also saying, you know, potentially in the long use, we don't necessarily think it's going to be viable for us, so keep it in the short term, but maybe look towards something down the road. I mean, what are we trying to, I mean, what does that look like? You know, it, like I said, it is our only space, but we're also saying, eh, maybe we don't need to sink everything into it, but that, that seems kind of counterintuitive when it's the one space we have. So what are the, what are our options really?
Well, in the recommendations, there are two other spaces that we're proposing to be converted into more public spaces, the smaller of the two being at the LEDWP, the larger of the two being what we're saying could be the new council chambers at the police facility across the street. There's great precedent for council chambers being multipurpose public amenities for other types of meetings, including worship, including performances, including birthday parties. I mean, there's, there's tons of precedent for that and it's, it's sort of a no-brainer when it's a taxpayer-funded facility, it should be open to as many public uses as, is, you know, whatever is safely possible for that room to serve. So we're, we're suggesting two other potential solutions for what's currently there.
And then I guess on to that, that portion of it being, you know, I, I, look, I love the concept of, you know, maybe getting the, I understand the police department and their current situation, it probably is not the best fit, that building, what they do is, is really incredible given that space. You know, what are those options and stuff like that? We'll obviously have to, to ask the community because that's what's most important. Getting City Hall in there, yes, opening it up would be great. I, you know, we do have a lot of town hall style meetings that happen in the Smith, the Elaine K. Smith Center, but at the same time, we don't have it all set up and prepared to record those, to have a lot of documentation in the same way that we do here. So if we'd want to, you have to, you know, bring some of that equipment over. So I do understand how that could be of benefit, especially when we talk about ADA accessibility. I know there's a lot of focus on, you know, this is a, a government building, so public access is important. It's a building for everybody. Making sure that it is ADA accessible is important. But it's also important not just for the public, but also for staff members. Because any one of us at any time could suffer an accident or have any type of condition that leaves us immobilized or in some way that not being able to access your job would just, would also be the latter. Or perhaps you already have those deficiencies and you're looking for it, I shouldn't say deficiencies, but disabilities, and you are looking to have a job here. You would not want to hire. So I understand, you know, all, in the, in the big picture, obviously, we're talking about City Hall and this is the public space. So really, it should, the public is the one who will have to determine what will be the best use and how we should approach this. Because I think, I've talked to a number of people, you know, I get lost in there, you know, I see people when I walk in there, they stop right there and they're looking, they're trying to read the signs, where do I go? You know, so I understand that. But then as soon as you start to talk about price tags, people start to go, oh, maybe not, maybe I can find my way around, so.
And I just want to point out, you know, these accessibility recommendations, they're not just to be nice. It's federal law.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I guess, I'll, I'll leave it at that for right now. I guess if I, as other things come to my head, I might, I might chime in, but I'll let other people speak.
Councilwoman Hoskins?
Well, I think that James probably covered everything. I should say Councilman Adams. But I'll try to ask you a few questions anyway. Why did you only do 50 buildings since the city owns many more than 50 buildings?
Can I defer to that? That one to you? Do you want to answer it? Okay.
We were originally asked to do all of the city structures. A number of those were like baseball structures, things that were not occupiable. So we decided in an effort to keep things more streamlined that we would just do occupiable facilities, something that people work in or in some cases, adjacent storage facilities as well. But we didn't do any of the gazebo's and baseball structures. And I think there were 200 some structures, and so we decided to pare it down.
I found the uses versus the conditions to be a little confusing in some of the stipulations that you had with the buildings.
Okay.
The filtration plant was listed as surplus, but I don't know if you really mean it's surplus.
So because we were tasked with finding city functions to occupy those spaces, we, when we talk about surplus, we're talking about square footage. So right now, that is square footage that the city owns that is vacant. So that's why it's being considered surplus. And because we don't have an appropriate city function to go in that building, that's why it's categorized as surplus.
So any building that had no use within that building, say, for instance, the airport, old airport hangar, that would be considered a surplus?
If there, if it wasn't being used for a function including storage. So storage space is not considered surplus unless it's being underutilized. So, you know, if your attic has half, you know, if the boxes fill up only half of your attic, then we would consider half of the attic to be surplus square footage.
Okay. And you said you did a survey. Could you say who you surveyed?
Yes, and all of the people surveyed are included in the appendix, but it was the heads of departments primarily, city, city, city staff.
So staff mostly?
Yes.
Okay, and you also mentioned that you tried to find the best location. I, is that right?
For?
For what, for the building, is, is this the best location for what it's being used for?
For the function in that building. So, yeah, so for example, is the police building the best location for the police department?
Well, that brings me to the best location for emergency aid, since there's 300 people every month that use that facility. I would think that would be the best location, especially since most of the people, you know, don't drive and use that facility.
Right.
So I was wondering how you determined that?
So any location that is central to the city, that has good public access, that current, like, like it has now, we certainly wouldn't recommend that, that facility or that function be relocated to a remote location that's harder to reach. It's, we did not recommend a final location for that because they're not a city function. But we would want the city to work with them to help them find a location that works for them and their customers.
Okay, and I was wondering about the historic buildings. Did you have separation for those? They just look to me like they're kind of all together. And I was wondering if maybe they could be separated and have more importance because they are historical.
Yeah, so that came up at the historic commission meeting. And right now, the way the report is organized, that they are just sort of among all of the buildings. And it was requested by them that we find a better way to designate them. So we're going to work with the city to see, you know, how to, how to document that in a more appropriate way.
And I'm a little concerned with the one-stop-shop thing.
Okay.
And the reason I am, I've seen it, tried to work in another town that I lived in. And the biggest problem that they had was if someone would come in and want to do like a building permit, and then of course, that person wouldn't know exactly. They might know where they should go or what they need to fill out, but they have to fill out a form before they can ask the question. And people do not like filling out forms. It's kind of like going to the doctor's office and filling out numerous amounts of forms. And in the end, that person wouldn't be able to really answer it because all the files would be located in another location. So even if that individual who worked in that location, say Susan, would not, she would not be able to bring all of her files to the central location. So I've, I've seen it not work.
Sure.
And I think that this is such a small town, and I, I think we're, we would lose kind of the community effect that I like in this town where we all are, we come in and we see so-and-so and we, you know, talk to them and everything. I just don't think that, that's just my opinion, okay? I don't think that's a really good idea. I am concerned with the visitor center being in that LAPD building. And that is because the access to that building is hard to get up those stairs. I just had knee surgery last year and I was doing a function there. And you have to get clear over to the side to hold on, onto the railing. And by the time you get to the door, you can barely get the door open. So that whole, I mean, to me, that would have to have some sort of a ramp or something. And then you're going to take away from the architecture of it. So I, I'm thinking since we already have the Chamber of Commerce, who has all the information you could possibly want, I just don't know if anyone would go to a location like that. And the airport hangar, I would like to see it used more for more of the city's storage equipment. I guess some is there. I'm hoping that maybe Public Works can get a little bit more in there. And it would be totally used. I think that's it. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Thank you. Excuse me. First of all, I'm, I know I don't need to disclose anything, but I've had a relationship with emergency aid for over five years. I was the treasurer and have been the grant coordinator, and I recently resigned from the board. So I have lots of opinions, but I won't share them. Except it is centrally located. It is about a, a central location where most of the clients do walk.
Right.
And have to bring groceries home. So just, just on that. How much would this all change assuming somebody came tomorrow and bought the house, bought the building on Colorado, at 1401 Colorado? It seemed like some of the assumptions in here are based on that we're going to be able to walk into the credit union and buy 1401 Colorado. And I don't know how much, how much does that building cost?
Two point.
Two point.
The estimate, the last estimate we received was approximately $2 million.
$2 million, okay. And also, I have a question. What's your experience with towns our size? You know, you were mentioning some other cities and Aspen and, and so on, but a town of 16,000, I think the, the last census was just around, right around 16,000, with an average growth rate per year of less than 1%.
Right.
And, and I noticed that, you know, future growth or future, has, have you personally or your group been involved with towns with, with strict growth ordinances that, where people start questioning, why are we going to need that five years from now if we're only going to have, you know, 500 more people?
Yeah, we've worked with town sizes, oh my gosh, I, all over the place. I will say, we, we rarely do a study where people don't, aren't surprised by the growth prediction, prediction. In almost every case, the growth prediction is lower than the historic, than, like if we're doing a 10-year prediction, we also look at the past 10 years in this, in the case of this study. In the case of most of our studies, it's lower. And so people are surprised to find out that they actually grew as much as they did in the last 10 years. And that helps people understand why the growth prediction is actually pretty accurate. We have done, I don't know that I have done one with a specific growth ordinance limitation, but we did investigate historic growth. We looked at historic staff growth over the last 10 years. We take into account, in this case, I think we actually went back 12 years because we wanted to take into account the recession. Because most people, you want to talk to this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's a little bit different. The city of Aspen, their population is about 6,500 people. Obviously, they have a lot of visitors as well, but they have an almost no growth and they're almost fully built out within their city confines and their limits. There are also a lot of issues with historic preservation, concern about growth. And they have an issue slightly different, but very similar with folks who've been living there for a long period of time and are very sensitive about change. So it was, it's actually very similar, albeit in a mountain town in Colorado, but the dynamics are very similar. And so I think based on our experience with a number of cities and a number of small towns, both in Utah and in Colorado, I feel like we're representing experience with towns. And then also, as far as the limited growth, we understand how folks feel. And I do think that people underestimate how much growth they have and are shocked afterward to find out that, you know, there is a 5% growth or 10%. I would say though, that the study does not, it's not focused on growth. The study's really focused on the best use of the spaces that you have. So we're, it's really not based on you have so much growth, so you need to make all of these moves. It's really, are you utilizing your buildings that you currently have for the best use for the building and for the constituents that utilize those services? And so that's where I think we're looking at maybe a reshifting of uses within those buildings to best utilize the inventory that you have. So that's what I would say the focus of the study is.
So I, I mean, I think I'm going to go back to, to the question of assuming there was not an appropriate building to buy, is there an alternate set of suggestions, for example, for the police department? I didn't realize, and I think, I know I took the tour, that you have to enter through the men's room. And if you were disabled, you would, and couldn't navigate the stairs and so on. So what recommendation would there be if there were not another building to buy?
Well, the first recommendation would be probably to find, to see if there was another building to buy. And then as we discussed, the other ideas that we had were building new and we discussed a number of different site possibilities for that. We also discussed renovating their existing building, which is, is doable. It's going to be real expensive, but it's doable. And so among the three options of repurposing, building new and renovating the existing, we would have to find something in those solutions. I don't think that there would be a major ripple effect if that building wasn't available. You know, in some master plans, there's, there's one move and then that, that is sort of the first domino in multiple moves. That's, that outcome did not happen with this study. So I don't think there would be a major ripple effect for all the other recommendations that we have at this point.
Okay, and another issue, I think Mr. Valtz brought it up also, co-locating, was any, were any options looked at with working with the national park building or with the schools? I, I lived in Scottsdale for, for 10 years and the, and the citizens centers were in the high school. They would come in, a place to pay utility bills and so on. That was well blocked off from the regular student population, but it was still, you know, as parents drop their kids off, they could go in. So was any, has that been your experience at all in terms of cities co-locating with, with other public entities?
Definitely had projects where we ended up co-locating, for example, some city functions with some county functions. That happens all the time. I am trying to think of any with schools. I can't think of any off the top of my head. It's not to say we haven't done them. We, we see that a lot with the higher ed master planning that we do, where there are different departments sharing space. It's sort of in interdisciplinary ways. So I think, again, the next step of this is soliciting more ideas from the public, and that's a great opportunity for that, to start working with those other entities, public schools, potentially the county, who knows?
Also, probably want just one more. Did you talk to the, to the museum folks and the hotel about whether or not they did need more room space?
We did not.
Okay. I was just, I didn't know whether this came from- I was just, I didn't know whether this came from some sort of outside request?
No.
Or was it just a, and, and I'm not saying assumption in a negative term, but just an assumption that they could use more room space and therefore it would be a good idea to move the museum out of the hotel?
Yeah, no, it was, maybe that would be a possibility, but we did not talk to them. That was not in our scope.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for right now.
Councilwoman Folder?
It's going down line. Okay, so what is the degree of scope of looking at the buildings? I know you had architects and engineers, but do they look at like foundation structure? You know, what is the degree of, was it just kind of cosmetic? Or did they really get into some of these buildings and look at any, you know, issues?
Right, we did not do civil analysis. So that would be, you know, below grade. We didn't analyze the state of landscaping. We didn't, you know, look at the health of the trees or anything like that. The architectural and mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems were all analyzed, not just for aesthetics, but for function, you know, is, is the, and, and for code. Is it meeting code? And is it, what is the state of maintenance of these elements? So the mechanical system, the plumbing, the electrical and the architectural, so the roof, the finishes, which some might consider aesthetic, but they are functional. All the, those, that's what was assessed.
Okay, so we didn't really get foundation assessments?
I don't, I don't think so, right?
No.
No, we didn't do any like drill into a foundation to look at it structurally or anything like that. No, we did not.
But you didn't know any cracks or something like that? That would significantly?
Anything that's visible, yeah, we would have noted. But we did not do any like forensic investigation of systems. There was no exploratory demolition of any kind.
Did, okay, so for the police station, it looks like it's currently about 16,000 square feet. And the need for the next 10 years, you have assessed at 22,000 square feet. The, does that include, because I know in some parts it discussed, they have a lack of indoor tactical space where they could use, use that space indoors. They have an outdoor tactical, but nothing indoors. So does that expansion from 16 to 22 include a tactical space? Or is that just a growth estimate based on, you know, population and size?
Their, theirs was a room by room program that did include tactical space. And that program is included in the appendix. I, again, this is a huge report. I don't expect you to have read every single word and every single line and every single page. But there is a detailed program for all the spaces that we programmed for the police needs. And, you know, currently they're doing some of that training in multiple locations. And Smith is one of them, I know. The outdoor training space was not in that square footage. So there's some tactical training that's done outdoors, that has to be done outdoors. That was not included in that square footage.
But the new square footage of the 22,000?
Yes.
Would include a space for tactical use?
Correct.
Okay, so, and it looks like the Colorado building is about 24,000 square feet?
Right, yeah. So there would be surplus square footage after they filled the space.
Okay, so there'd be about 2,000 square feet?
Correct. And that would be assuming that the tactical space was included in their suite. I mean, when, when, if this project were to go forth and to go to the design, it might become more feasible to put tactical spaces in another location. So that would reduce that square footage and increase the surplus.
Okay, so there is more space, but not a ton of more space?
Right.
Okay. And then, did you look into for the current police station? I know it was discussed, you know, remodeling it, but was there anything discussed about actually adding an addition to it?
We did look at an addition in the, in the first of the two workshops. And we had some diagrams that were explored for that. It's, it's a tricky site for an addition of the size that is needed. And once we looked at the cost, it did, it did fall lower on the, on the list of realities.
So do you know what the cost would be compared to?
Off the top of my mind, I don't. I don't, um, gosh, we'd have to go back and look.
Okay, okay. That would be nice to know.
Sure.
You know, the, the different estimates of cost. And I know you, you vetted this out already, but we haven't seen that yet. So it'd be good to know. Okay, the, the city hall. So I think that, so city hall is interesting because you go upstairs and then you come to a platform where you can either go up or down. Did you look into removing the front stairs and just being come, able to come into like a level floor, level?
We, we looked at everything. We did discuss that. I think that from a historical preservation standpoint, that that would not honor the building. I don't think that, I think that would be beyond just frowned upon. I don't think that would be the best architectural solution.
You would could, without removing the front, where we would just remove the stairs?
Correct.
And entrance into the certain space? Just my thought on that is because it would keep the city main entrance, the main entrance, instead of coming into a side of a building. And also, it would provide easy access for parking and walking straight into the building instead of having to walk around to the side. Also, if you parked at the, if you moved everything to the end of the building, you're going to take out the two parking spaces that are currently there. And street parking is often limited because it overflows from the park and rec building.
Yeah.
Most often.
Yeah, I mean, this building is a challenge.
Right.
There's, there's not a really simple, easy, obvious solution to all of the parameters, maintain the historic value, make it safe, make it accessible, make the city functions easier to, you know, make this easier for them to do their jobs. It's, it's, it's a hard problem. So, yeah, we did consider that, but I, I think it would fail. I don't think it would even get past Chippewa.
So some other things that were not really addressed in the study is our parks and recreation. And I know that I saw a line there, it's kind of without the scope. But it didn't even mention, you know, some items that we have currently in our capital improvement program. In fiscal year 24, we have on there a plan or design for a possible new building or relocation of our safety program. And so in this study, nowhere does it discuss kind of current use. So this isn't a new use, this is current uses that we're already using. So that's kind of a, a red flag for me because, you know, we're looking at buildings and if we're surplusing or if we're getting rid of one, well, down the line, we're looking at expanding some space that's not even discussed at all. The other thing is that I know the, we have a gymnasium that's used for gymnastics in the upper level of our parks and rec building. That's a very tight space and it's been like, like, for a long time. And a lot of instructors have come and gone looking for, you know, some alternative for that. And it's not discussed at all either in this, in this assessment. Also in our capital improvement fund, there's ideas of expanding the dining room at the Boulder Creek Golf Club, adding a new cart barn and a renovation at the multi, or the other golf course, the Minneapolis Golf Course. So I just would like to capture some of those capital improvement program, you know, projects that we have in the future in this, when we're talking about building use, where we're putting buildings and what buildings really need priority. And I hope that city staff uses this. I mean, you went into every building, main building that we use is occupied, to make a schedule for actual maintenance of our buildings that we use that, you know, we've been really good about creating a verb program for our replacement of our vehicles. But I think we need the same kind of management and look at for our maintaining, maintaining our buildings.
Councilwoman Folder? Yeah, staff is already putting together a list and they've actually picked off a number of those items from the initial reports we were getting from the, the engineers and architects. So yeah, staff's already started taking care of some of the issues that were easy for them to do. But yeah, this is definitely going to create a good maintenance plan for them. They had a maintenance plan in the past, but as been brought up, there were some things that were lacking. And so this will help us a lot.
That's good to hear, thank you. And I know a lot of, I mean, no, you know, the LA NWPD building, you know, had a lot of issues on it in this building, in this scope. But then it's been taken care of, I know, with repainting and things like that. So I know that there's been some work done. And hopefully that can continue. Another thing that wasn't, I didn't see in there was ADA access to the old gym at the rec center. I know that you can enter between the two gyms, but once you're inside, there's really nowhere for someone to go. Besides in the gym. If you, if you were to sit and watch a performance, you're at gym level where all the rest of the seating is up in stadiums. So it didn't really address kind of a ramp or anything for ADA in that building. That I saw at least in this report. I tried to be thorough in it. Let's see, the other is, I wanted to clarify the ABC buildings. In page 34, it talks about actually demolishing one of the buildings. It says, it's called the abandoned storage building. It is recommended that this building be demolished due to safety maintenance concerns. We actually have just put an assessment on that building to have it appraised because the nonprofit is looking into that. So I'm a little concerned when we're, the difference. You know, is repurposing it or demolishing it?
Well, in the report, we didn't identify a city use for that building. So if we repurpose it to someone else to use, that's fine. But if we don't repurpose it to someone else to use, we don't have a need for it. We're recommending that it be demolished.
Okay, thank you. Then our, the only, the other thing is that on here, it's hard to tell what your recommendations are as tied to cost. And I know you do break it down in like, there's like 50 pages or so. But upfront, it's hard to see. I see that, you know, if, can you explain the difference between the 16 million if we don't do anything versus the 41 million if we did everything?
Yeah, would it be possible to get that page on the screen to talk to it? Maybe? It's in the report, it's not in the presentation, but I know what she's talking about. There's, okay. So forgive me, because I can, can I, can I borrow at least your page to talk to it? So there are two charts. We, we had two different cost assessment efforts. One was just for capital improvements. If all the buildings stay exactly as they are, everybody's in them as they are. Those were the total costs of the capital improvement needs.
So that's addressing every item, when you went through the building, you know, replace, you know, this carpet, replace this roof. All of those things that it would?
Right, mechanical system. And it was, it took into account when something might need to happen. So for example, the warranty on this roof expires in seven years. So the escalation value was applied to that cost to assume that it would take place in seven years. So you would maintain the roof now and in seven years it would need to be replaced. Or a mechanical system or whatever. So it, it did two things. It assessed all the capital maintenance requirements of all the buildings and when they need to happen. So it put a timeline to those things, which is part of why Keegan was saying they've been able to create a maintenance plan. That is all in table two on that page that you're referring to. So that breaks down a total cost, the total cost over the next 10 years for the capital improvements of the buildings. If nothing changed, if nobody moved, if everybody stayed right where they are and it was sort of status quo, that is estimated at the 16.7. The other table, table one, is if you did take on all the projects that we are recommending, if you were able to take them on in, like start right now, getting the procurement for the design and construction and start breaking ground as soon as that design phase is, is complete. If you did all of them, it would be 41.5 this year. If you waited two years and did all of them, it would be 43. And the reason that we have all that detail in the appendix is because you're not going to do all of them all at once. That's not, it wouldn't make any sense, it's not possible. And plus, you don't need that fire station right now. You don't need the EOC maybe this year, but it'd be night. You know, I think we had timelines associated with all the different projects. And then some of them also have a ripple effect. So you can't renovate the police station until the police move out. You can't move out the police until you've renovated the Colorado Street Building. So there was some phasing involved with that too. So we broke down all the projects that could happen in each timeframe. And if you took all of them on, the total cost would be 45. The goal of that table one is to show what you, what it costs you to wait. Right? So if you wait on some of those projects, not only are you losing the efficiencies, but you, you spend more money, right? Because of escalation.
Okay, so I, I guess what I want to say is that it's kind of hard to see what the recommendation is, right? Because some things are in words and some things are bullet points. So what exactly is the recommendation that's falling under that 41 million? Is it, is it that the purchase, including on Colorado Street? Or is that either one, it could be the purchase or building another building?
It includes the renovation of that building. It did not include the purchase of that building. None of the costs include site improvements. None of the costs include site acquisition. Because if there was a site unknown, we didn't know, you know, obviously what it would cost. Although we did have an estimate on the Colorado Street Building. It was the only one that we had at estimate. So it was excluded just so that we can be consistent. It includes, so each line item includes all of the recommended projects in the report. Relocating the police, renovating city hall, adding in addition to the court. What are all renovations for the LEDWPP building? Everything we've discussed today, basically.
Okay, okay.
And, and it's worth noting that the capital improvement cost to maintain this building as is would be altered if you decided to renovate it instead. So that would have sort of a net waggle effect on the capital improvement table.
Okay. I noticed you didn't put a recommendation of where all the money's going to come from. I had to say that.
Big sale, right?
All right, just two last things. I, you know, I, I get the need for a one-stop shop. But implementing it, it gets difficult because you have probably the three biggest public uses that people come in for publicly is, I want to guess that it's utility billing, permitting and records through their city clerks, which are all three different departments. So without putting them all in one room together, it, it does cause frustration for the public when there's someone that doesn't have all those answers. And then they end up going to a different area anyways. And so I just really am cautious about, you know, it might be nice to have one person direct where needed to go, but having them all in one spot doesn't always work unless you're all physically together. Because I've, I've had that in other agencies. It, it gets frustrated, you know, and it gets, becomes a lack of communication often as, as well. And one last thing, as you go out and start discussing this with the public, I would like to see a capture of actual capacity needs as for public uses. So I know we, we discussed a lot of the building needs as far as, you know, employees who work here daily. But it's also, I'd like to capture that for how many people would actually be needed in the space for the using the swimming pool or using the chamber, you know, for city council meetings, the clubhouses, those kind of things where there's a, you know, gathering of people. Because that's going to implement and look, and ripple into how many bathrooms are needed or how many other kind of things are required as well. So as that goes out, you know, of how many things, I would, you talk to the public to also kind of gather what public needs are needed for the use of the buildings. And I think that's all I have, so thank you.
Well, I'll pick up close to where Councilwoman Folder left off, and that's with regard to the money. And my comments are directed more to staff than to the consulting firm. You know, my experience has been that consultant reports usually reflect what they've been told. In this case, it's clear to me that there were a number of priorities that they were asked to either look at or that's just where the conversations occurred were around a certain number of topics. You know, Councilman Adams said- Um, you know, Councilman Adams had asked earlier, uh, how this came about. Um, again, initially, I'm, I'm the only member of council that, uh, was involved with that. Initially, this came about was we were going to put however many millions of dollars into City Hall. I think it was six million dollars or something like that. Uh, and then it's like, well, no, we, we need to look at the police department. Uh, and then it's like, well, no, let's go ahead and do everything we own. Um, you know, should that type of thing be done? Certainly it should be done, you, you should have an idea. Uh, we also have staff that can do a lot of that, that looks at the condition of buildings and determines what we're, should be putting our money into. So, you know, I've certainly gotten feedback from, uh, members of the community. You know, half million dollars, our general fund budget's around thirty-four million. You know, that's a significant piece of our yearly budget, uh, for this one study. And studies are good for some number of years and then fade away. Uh, there's, i-in my estimation, there's no way we would ever approach having the revenue available to do all the projects that are listed here. Uh, we simply do not generate that kind of income. Uh, so by the time we get to something, uh, the report's going to be obsolete. So I, I, I think we've probably overshot the mark by saying, well, let's go ahead and do everything for something that started out to be, let's just look at City Hall. Um, another way you can tell where the input came from, uh, the one body that seemed to be able to find a ho-a home almost anywhere was City Council. So if you want to give somebody the boot, well, City Council, they, you know, they can, they can go across the street. They can go to the Smith Building, maybe over the water filtration plant, perhaps Colorado Street Building. We don't really care where they go, it's only City Council, they can be housed almost anywhere. So that is indicative to me of the input to this. And I, I think that that's not good. Uh, again, when this was originally commissioned, I know somewhere in the report it says that it was due in November uh, of last year. No, that's not my recollection, it was gonna be a six-month project and we would have the report last June. Uh, and then we'd be able to roll forward on some things that were pending, use of buildings at ABC Park, uh, things like that. And then it was like, well, no, it'd be August, September, November, February. We finally have the report. Again, I, I, I think that when we look at where the emphasis on many things are put in here, uh, public safety is certainly high up on that list. Uh, that's in our strategic plan, uh, that's often, uh, the reason people look to their local government is to provide that public safety. But I think when we do that, we also need to look at, uh, we're a community of sixteen thousand. We are also, uh, the safest, at least rated, uh, by, uh, statistics as the safest community in, in the state of Nevada. Uh, certainly I've, Chief Shea's given me a tour across the street. Uh, you know, again, I'll, I'll, you do the old back in the old days thing. That building over there was City Hall, Post Office, Library, Police Department. Um, pretty much every city function was in that building over there. Uh, times change, standards change, requirements change. Uh, the holding cells over there, the jail cells over there are, uh, no longer up to standard. Uh, that's an issue, you know, if I'm a police officer and I've made an arrest and I'm bringing somebody in, I prefer that they not be sitting right next to me as I'm filling out the report. I want to be able to secure that individual somewhere. So that's certainly a concern. Uh, is the space best utilized over there? Well, what had been the former library is taken up with, uh, office space, desks, things like that. You know, it's probably not the best use, but even if that were to be reconfigured, is it still working for the police department over there? We, we probably do need to look at a change. Uh, initially, the change for the police department was they would be on the third floor of the Smith Building. And I kept thinking to myself, why on earth would you put the police department on the third floor of the Smith Building? But, you know, that was going to be looked at, well, that didn't last very long as an idea. Suggestions like we need an emergency operations center. Um, I, I just have difficulty understanding how that can really be at the top of our priority list uh, to get things done for a community of sixteen thousand people. Uh, Chief Shea has pointed out that they have a mobile command center that has the communications gear that apparently does communicate with our existing systems. Uh, you know, i-if something were to occur in Boulder City, uh, it seems that that would provide the temporary type of, uh, housing that we would need or the equipment that we would need. Because the one thing we're going to do if we're faced with a major disaster is we're gonna start making phone calls. Hello Metro, hello Henderson Fire, hello to our neighbors who do have those types of resources. Now that doesn't make us the, the poor sibling, but it does recognize that a community of sixteen thousand people can't afford some of all these things that the other agencies have available because their tax base is far larger than ours. Uh, it's been mentioned by a couple of the council members about this one-stop concept. Uh, the example used is Riverside, California, Riverside, California population greater than three hundred and twenty thousand people. Approximate, uh, population size is Henderson. We're not Henderson, you know, we, we can't afford the types of amenities that, uh, communities that are twenty times our size can afford. That's just a fact of numbers. Um, looking at the input that the council has had to this process, again, uh, you know, we talked about, uh, these visioning sessions and things like that. Uh, I don't recall there being that type of input from council in this process. And the shortfall that I see with that is a lot of this is policy. A lot of what is in this report is how is this city going to conduct itself? Not the nuts and bolts of it, but what we view as priorities. And I don't see where the council was queried about that, had input to the process, was surveyed or anything else. This appears to be staff-driven, uh, throughout the, the time that this was being done. I think the results reflect that, and that, that's not a criticism of city staff. It's just when you're looking at things, you're looking at it from your perspective. City Council has a different perspective and what council is supposed to be doing is setting the policies for the community. I, I don't see that within this document. I think other council members have, have mentioned several things in here that, uh, probably are not what we would see as the outcomes we prefer on this. Uh, it's talked about that there was an employee survey. Uh, I did find that in the report, uh, I'm not sure exactly how many names are there, but if there's more than a dozen responses there, I, I didn't see them, uh, included in the report. So I'm not sure even how many employees had, uh, input to this. Uh, you know, a lot of it, it talks about giving employees workspace, uh, creating, you know, private meeting room space, uh, reflecting what employees are desiring. But it doesn't appear that the employees, the, uh, people who are doing the majority of the work had a great deal of input to this either. Uh, others have mentioned the ABC buildings, you know, looking through there. Uh, talked about the Boys and Girls Clubs, what had been the former Boys and Girls Club. I think the cost of that renovation of that was half a million dollars. Uh, there, there may be plans that that building, uh, gets donated to potentially the library, potentially a nonprofit or be sold off. It's already been, uh, listed on our land management plan for disposal, uh, for a few years now. Uh, Councilwoman Folda mentioned the storage building. Uh, you know, that became a storage building. Well, because somebody decided to go in and try and make it a, a training facility for the fire department. Uh, that's another thing that came up in there about the tactical training needs for our police officers. It is in the report, the range that we have out near the Dry Lake Bed or out in El Dorado Valley. Um, that's a, a very large facility. I believe even federal agencies use that from time to time for their training. We get back to the sixteen thousand population of Boulder City. Exactly what is it we can provide? And when we have available to us or may have available to us, uh, facilities from at least three other police departments, uh, we should be looking at what they might be able to contract with us to provide, rather than us saying, you know what, we need what all the big kids on the block have. We're not the big kid on the block, we're, we're, we're simply not going to be the big kid on the block. Much of the information that appears in the report for the assessments is not very detailed, in my opinion. Uh, there are some brief descriptions of conditions of buildings, but I really didn't see recommendations for the types of repairs. Was that not part, uh, not part of the scope of your work? Or was that, uh, included in notes given to staff? Or is that something for future consideration?
Mayor, our plan was that the condition that they found, our staff would then take that and build our rec, our maintenance plan from that, so we would do that.
A lot of this isn't maintenance though, I mean, and some of the things that are being discussed are, uh, you know, moving buildings, moving people, moving offices, moving, uh, how space inside of a building is configured. Uh, but I don't see much in the way of how that gets done. You know, if, if we use this chamber, uh, council chambers as an example, you know, was it looked at to say, well, if you wanted to expand the space, you can do that? Uh, were the bearing wall, load-bearing walls considered? You know, wa-was that type of thing considered? Or just say, well, maybe you can do that, but, uh, you'll have to figure out if you can actually do it or not?
So the cost estimates, we're talking about a couple of different things here. So for the building assessments, there, um, for the fifty buildings, it was just a physical assessment of the building and not a functional assessment. Those, those are quite detailed, detailed to the extent that the cost estimator could say, all right, they're replacing, however many square feet of carpet and it's gonna cost this much. Or the mechanical system is this type of system and it's got seven years left. And so those were very detailed. The, um, functional assessments that were done did include, so for example, we looked at multiple options for this building, two of which did include keeping the city council chambers in this building, by the way.
Or, or not, they can go, they can go anywhere, we know they can go anywhere.
In order for this building to accommodate everything that's currently housed in it, it, it would need to expand its footprint. So we looked at expansion options, we looked at renovation options, we looked at options that relocated other groups and kept the council chambers here. Um, it was ultimately determined that the best of the options landed with relocating you across the street. Um, and that took into account the cost of renovation to make this, this building work for the council chambers, both from an accessibility and a safety standpoint, as well as all the other functions that would need to stay here. Um, we did take into account the structural walls. For the cost estimates, there were, we, so this is a pretty typical process for master planning, because you're, you're at a very high level, you're not doing design. You don't know exactly what the square foot of drywall is going to be, because you haven't gotten into that level of detail, you're very, you're, you're up here. So for master planning, the way we approach cost estimating is we divide all of the square footage that's going to be renovated into three levels. Major renovation, moderate renovation and minor renovation. And then we apply a cost per square foot based on the building that we're talking about and the use that's being recommended. So for example, it's a lot more expensive to build police station facilities than it is to build standard office facilities. So there's a cost per square foot associated with the type of function. And in an historic building, it's gonna be a higher cost to renovate, both because of just the paperwork that you have to go through to renovate any historic building. But in Boulder City, there's a really specific cost for most of the historic buildings, which is that the concrete, concrete that was used is in most cases the same concrete that was used to build the dam. So it's a lot denser and it's a lot harder to.
They made the stuff really good, didn't they?
Yeah, yeah, they did. Roger has this great sample, if anybody's ever seen it in his office, of like a core that they drilled. It's, um, gosh, it's amazingly dense. Um, so the, the cost estimates for all the recommended, um, functional changes were done at that level, but they, we did take into account the structural walls. And you can see in the diagrams that I had for City Hall, for example, the major structural walls are considered for the, the overall footprint of a, of a space, um, for use. So to answer your question, yes, those things were all considered.
Hey, and again, what I'm getting at is you have cost estimates in there. You know, I've seen it before on building renovations where it's like, oops, that's not gonna work. Sorry, your cost just increased forty percent on the project and.
You find asbestos somewhere you didn't know it was, and that happens all the time.
That's not so much, but, you know, that, well, we didn't consider that if we move this wall, you're gonna have to go do all of this and.
Yeah, to the best of our ability, we did consider those kinds of things.
Okay, uh, and along that same line, uh, there's been mention of seismic reinforcement on buildings, the, uh, Smith Building, the water filtration plant. Is any of that required on those buildings?
It would be required depending on the use that was recommend, or that, that ended up in that building. So for example, we considered what if the police building, the police department moved over there? It was, uh, it was ruled out for a number of reasons, first of all being there's not enough square footage for their need. But the second being that the cost, because that is a critical facility, it would have to be upgraded to meet seismic standards. And the cost to make that building meet those code requirements was very prohibitive.
So if a, uh, information center or visitor's center were put into the water filtration plant, um, you know, if we lose a few tourists in an earthquake.
I, I mean, it's funny, I don't write the code, but that is the case. The visitor's center does not have to meet the same requirements that an E O C would have to meet.
Okay, a-again, what I'm getting at is cost when we look at these, because it's been stated about the filtration plant and the Smith Building. Well, you're gonna have all this money for the seismic reinforcement. Uh, and yet my experience has been that's usually not the case, so.
It just depends on what you end up putting there. If we, if you put the police there, you would have to upgrade it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, also has been talked that, uh, there are next steps in this process. Uh, this question's for city staff, with the contract that's been let here, is that contract now exhausted with the, uh, completion of this report? Or is there more under that contract to be done as far as input? Oh, this is to you, uh, Mr. City Manager, i-is there more of that to be done now as far as input from the public?
The next step from here after the workshop is that we would be ha-having a public input session to ta-talk about, introduce these particular concepts, get additional input from the public. And then eventually I think we come back to the council with those additional, uh, inputs. I'm looking at my staff, make sure that I've got that correct.
And that, that's still included in this four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar contract price?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. Yeah, when we get to things like the fire department, again, we're undergoing a remodel on that right now. Uh, there's been a slight, uh, expansion of it, but certainly it's being reconfigured, uh, on the interior spaces. And yet an awful lot of time is spent in the report talking about building another fire station just a couple of miles away from that. Uh, e-even further away from the majority of the city. It actually tucks that away into a corner of the city at the airport. Uh, there's talk about, well, there's easy access to the, it says highway, I'm assuming that they're referencing the I eleven. Uh, there's not easy access, there's an emergency entrance that was provided for, for the I eleven. But we're looking at putting millions of dollars in improvements at the airport. And yet from what I've seen of the finances at the airport, uh, there simply is not revenue being generated there that would pay for that. And the airport is supposed to be an enterprise fund. So a lot of talk about putting in a new administration building, a fire department, uh, a number of things being done. done there, but I don't see how that would get paid for. Mr. City Manager, do you have any suggestions on that?
These were conceptual ideas that were brought forward, given the amount of traffic and the potential expansion by adding a, the controlled airspace versus uncontrolled airspace, the FAA tower, and then what safety concerns would that generate. Currently, as you know, that in the last, I don't know, year, two years, we've had a number of aircraft incidences that, you know, our fire department did respond, you know, quickly, but, you know, certainly that would be, you know, having additional controlled airspace, that you would be able to have emergency response there as well. Potentially, FAA would, you know, there's a possibility of them assisting with the funding of that. Maybe not. But Mayor, your point is well taken, is that, you know, these are all the ideas and concepts. Doesn't mean that, you know, that by moving forward, that we have the money, you know, but that is an option that obviously, you know, was considered. And then, you know, part of the prioritization would have to include whether or not there is funding. So at this point, it's really was a concept. It was something that I think the prior fire chief was concerned about. We don't have a fully functioning emergency operations center. Generally speaking, I know that they try to put emergency operations centers near those kinds of public facilities like an airport, that if there is a significant event that occurs, generally speaking, the hub would be an airport where you have air traffic coming in and out to assist with whatever those, the incident might be that, that is occurring in the regional area. You know, I come from a background where we don't put the emergency operations center, you know, near the flight line. We put it away from the flight line. So there's two different schools of thought, depending on, you know, who's looking at that. But I guess to answer the, you know, the direct question is, these are conceptual ideas, these are thoughts. You know, certainly does not have to be a priority. It could be, you know, something that we keep in the back of our minds for the future. But in terms of, you know, funding that, you know, that would be something that, you know, as we look at, you know, the totality, is where does that fall in the priority, if at all, moving forward?
Well, I guess that's the difficulty when reviewing a report like this. It seems to be, well, here's a presentation of what the city needs. And when you start looking at that, it starts to be, well, you know, that would be nice to have, but is it necessary to have? And if it's, well, we're looking at more and more traffic at the airport, maybe we saw, as a city, we need to say, is this costing us too much? And rather than trying to grow the airport, we start to shrink operations down there. You know, again, I think it's a question that we just keep throwing these dollar signs up there and saying, here's what you need, here's what you need. Well, we have no means to do it. We simply don't have the means to do it. So that is very concerning. It has also been talked about that we would partner with the federal agencies here in Boulder City and, on a dispatch center, not an EOC, although maybe that's the popular term now, but a dispatch center. And we would not only help them, they would help us. We have a long tradition of doing that here in Boulder City, partnering with these federal agencies. So I get, you know, seeing the dollar signs that are out there, seeing what appears to be the priority that's being put on that within the report, seems to indicate that, well, you know, that's something that's at the top of the list for city staff, anyway.
I would just comment by saying that this report gives you the bare bones, which is maybe $2, $3 million total, to address the absolute bare necessities that we would recommend the council consider going forward. Two, you know, everything that, you know, would be of benefit to the community as a whole. And yes, that is a very large number, and because of that, we wanted to make sure that we discussed and at least presented to the council and to the community, these are all the ideas that have come forward. These are all the concerns and recommendations of staff and, you know, moving forward on all these different functions. Not to say that they absolutely must happen and happen now, but at least consider that as we move forward. It doesn't have to happen now, it doesn't have to happen perhaps in five years, but maybe 10 or 15 years, that we continue to plan and have that in the horizon that we think about. And then maybe in the future, things may change. Maybe the federal government does partner, you know, for example, with, you know, regional dispatch. That is something we've been discussing. Come to find out, the individual that we were discussing it with is now leaving in less than two weeks. So, you know, we're going to be back to square one and trying to rejuvenate those particular discussions. So I think the thought being, you know, partnership with our other agencies, whether they're state, federal agencies, is always ongoing. We look for all those other opportunities. But the discussion of having a regional operations center or an emergency operations center is still a discussion that we need to have. The question becomes, how do we do that in the end? And, you know, one is obviously considering, you know, the city's own emergency operations center, partnering with a federal agency, if that's possible. But we're not giving up on all of the options, but we do need to identify where, you know, what are those needs, and then how do we best fulfill those needs?
Okay. Again, going back to the Colorado Street Building, you know, so much of what's in the report is basically saying, yeah, you're going to buy that building. That's actually going to be the first thing you're going to do. You know, we don't, we don't know that. You know, I don't know that there's a couple million dollars, perhaps. And again, that building has an interesting ownership lineage over the past few years, as far as how that value was arrived at. But it's like, well, okay, $2 million, we'll just take that out of the bank and that we may not have?
Again, during the initial part of the study, it became known to us that that building was available. And as staff looked at that, we were looking at, you know, how potentially we might be able to come up with a plan to address all the different functional needs. Initially, the concern was, you know, if PD were to move, to address all of their functional needs, initially, we thought the Smith Center was an appropriate area. Come to find out, after the assessment, you know, particularly as it comes to the codes, seismic and whatnot, that that was not a place to put the police department. But at the same time, it became, you know, known to us that there was a facility that potentially would maybe answer, you know, the issues, you know, concerning the police department. And we actually went to look at the building, and we found that it more than adequately met most of their needs. Now, it doesn't mean that it's just $2 million and that's it. Obviously, we would have to go in and do some retrofitting, but that retrofitting is substantially less than any cost, as you look at the cost of refurbishing where they're at, which is substantially higher. And then building new is substantially higher than building, than purchasing an existing building and doing some remodeling to be able to house not only police functions, but perhaps other city functions as well.
Okay. And again, the projections for that, you know, would a facility like that then have holding cells or jail cells that would be up to standard? Would those actually be used to house prisoners that were currently paying to house elsewhere?
That did not contemplate having holding cells here, because that is not the model, and because we currently do have a contract, I think it's with Henderson for holding cells and also Clark County for initial arrests. And then once someone is, finally goes through the system that they found guilty and sentenced, then the long-term sentencing happens elsewhere.
You know, several members of the council have brought up this term highest and best use for any building. And in particular, that was brought up with regard to the water and power building. Talk about a loaded term, huh? You know, highest and best use. What does that mean? Well, somebody decided on a criteria that allowed you to get to a decision about what the highest and best use was. I think Councilman Adams put it well. What an agency like Emergency Aid does for the community, they've certainly had some of their people here to talk about some of the things they do. And then the highest and best use was, well, we'll find another nonprofit that's currently not in a city-owned facility, and we'll move one nonprofit out so another nonprofit can move in. Well, that nonprofit, the hotel, had had open space in the basement there for years that they weren't utilizing, but then decided, well, gee, the water and power building is the place to go. And we arrive at a term to say, that's the highest and best use. I don't know that it is. I certainly think that there are reasons why Emergency Aid has been a service to this community, going back to the very beginning of the community. So when we say highest and best use, I would want to know what the criteria was to arrive at that determination, and why it is that another nonprofit, you know, is able to be determined to have a better use for the community. There is other space there at water and power. We may look at how that space is configured over there to see if there might be something that could be done. I believe that the Red Mountain Choir Music Company is still occupying some of the space over there. Perhaps that would be the function that could go elsewhere. My understanding is their performances are now being held at the Smith Building. There should be office space over there available. I think there are a lot of these things that when we use terms like highest and best use, that criteria needs to be specified how we got there, so that everybody understands that. Because quite honestly, I don't really see how we're swapping nonprofits and that somehow is coming up with a higher and better use. The water filtration plant is another one. Certainly, that building sat there for 30 years with nobody doing anything about it. That's a crime in this community. But it was allowed to sit there, deteriorate. You know, fortunately, we have other nonprofits that have taken an interest in that and starting a process to do that. Certainly, we're going to need input from the community about what might be done with that. But in the report, it seems to indicate, well, you need to sell the building and let somebody else worry about what to do with it. But in other areas of the report, it doesn't seem to say that. So there's some ambiguity about that. Regarding things like securing parking areas for potentially employees, but certainly for police vehicles, you know, I don't know how many incidents have occurred with vandalism or theft from the vehicles out there. But again, I think we have to look at, how many millions of dollars do we spend to protect something when the chance or the history of that event occurring are close to zero? So we also have these police vehicles that officers are able to take home and park at their residences. You know, how are those vehicles being protected, or what's different about the protection needed for those vehicles? So when we talk about the money needed to do some of these things, I believe it has to be evaluated in, what's the risk, what's the benefit of doing it, rather than just saying, well, the vehicle should be secured. Of course, they should be secured. But we have to look at how much risk we have involved before we start spending an awful lot of money to do that. Question for Mr. Lutrell. What is the paving building? What will the paving building be?
The paving building is that Colorado Street Building. That, what was it, Las Vegas Paving? That's initially how we referred to it when we were doing the workshops, but...
Okay. Very confusing, because when I read the report, it looked like Public Works wanted to construct a new building on their property on Railroad Avenue. Just not indicative at all that the paving building was 1401 Colorado.
We do have a lot of street improvements we got to do, so.
I knew that. I knew that, and that's why I was thinking, well, they want some building for equipment or something.
Maybe, I'll go talk to RTC, maybe they can help us with the building.
I can almost assure you, don't tell them you want it for a building. Because the answer will be no. You know, in looking over improvements at the pool, sometimes known as the Aquatic Center, they were talking about $1.2 million in improvements there. I wasn't really certain how that number was arrived at. There is a breakdown there. But I did see something there, $243,000 for windows at the pool. Looks like Mr. Hall has left. Anyone know what we're spending a quarter million dollars on windows at the pool for?
I apologize that I can't answer the specific question. I could look into the report and figure it out. But I know that windows are very expensive, and if they need to be replaced...
Well, there are. There just aren't very many of them at the pool.
Okay.
Maybe they were talking about putting windows in. I don't know.
No, there was no recommendation to renovate that in that kind of way. So I would have to look into it and answer you later. I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. And I believe it was Councilwoman Folda had mentioned that, you know, Cart Barn at Boulder Creek, we had done something in our CIP. As I recall, the cost of that was $800,000. But the recommendation here is just to be, keep what's there and maintain what's there. Yes, it looks like, as we go through the budget process here in the next few months, we're going to have to spend an awful lot of time looking at that capital improvement project list that was arrived at, I think, in November of last year. So again, I do appreciate what was in the report. I think there's some very valuable information. Staff, I think we could have had more input from certainly city council and potentially the community, as far as what their emphasis was. Again, I do get that when someone comes to City Hall, they may not be familiar with this. But I wonder how many times a year, any resident in Boulder City has a need to come to City Hall. And we all have to get back to, you know, what's the bang for the buck? How many millions of dollars do we need to invest in something so that a person doesn't have to make a wrong turn in the building before they find the right office? Anyway, that's all I have. Anyone else have other questions that have occurred? Councilman Adams?
I did have one of this kind of, this is for the city clerk. What does NRS stipulate? When we were talking about new for storage, for records, what does NRS stipulate as far as record-keeping, as far as hard copy versus digital, things of that nature?
Just recently, NRS has allowed us to digitize. So it was never considered a permanent storage solution until recently. And then the storage solution that you use has to be Department of Defense certified. So yes, although we are moving that way, that's why we converted all that microfilm to digital, because that's a physical thing and that's outdated. We still have thousands, probably millions of paper that we have to convert. It's a huge, ongoing project. And we'll always have paper to some extent, just because we don't archive and digitize everything. If it, if we don't keep it for a long period of time, it's just not cost efficient. So, and you know, maybe that will change as technology changes. But right now, long-term, what I would like to see is a one-stop shop for records, because, because each department is responsible, they have the legal custody, they're responsible for their own. But as we all know, people keep it in different ways. It would be nice to have it. If somebody came in for records, they wouldn't have to go to six different places to get six types of records. When we email them, it comes through us, but they're not in one location. It would be nice to house them in one location.
And then, obviously, digital is, is a great storage use. I, you know, here I am, I'm, you know, a young guy. I don't always necessarily think that digital storage is always as great. You know, sometimes, you know, files do get corrupted. There are ways to back up to make sure these sorts of deficiencies don't happen. But I do still believe that having paper and hard copies is also very important. So we are talking about a lot of money here. So the Colorado Building, $2. something million. Does this go to a vote of the people? Is this go-to-a-vote of the people? Uh, you know, are, you know, and then how does that go with, you know, it wouldn't have to do that if, as long as it goes, we have the money?
That's correct. Um, so the only time that you would take, uh, this to the vote of the people is if you're planning to, um, uh, to do a loan, um, you know, to do a bond.
Okay. Yeah, cause I was just, you know, you look at all these numbers, and if we were to have to ask a question, hey, do you guys want $16 million to make some improvements, uh, for the city in a kind of blank way? I don't think it would fly very well, so...
And that's why, um, you know, you see from the bare bones all the way up to 40 something million dollars, because we certainly wanted to show the scope, but the reality is, is that when we really start talking about, uh, how do we go about funding, you know, what's the appetite of the council, you know, in terms of policy directions, what's the appetite of the community in terms of support, et cetera, et cetera, that starts to really bring things back into reality of what is supported by all of the interested stakeholders.
I do believe the Capital Improvement Fund is a potential source of something like that as well, and it's not just debt.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Oh, yeah, um, I do have a question. Um, go back to the concept of one-stop shop. Uh, this is 2020, and I'm not sure how many people actually drive over, uh, and I, and I think it also addresses something Councilwoman Folda mentioned. Uh, in terms of usage, I mean, I know, uh, that when I need something or want to fill out a document, my first thought is, I'm gonna go to my computer, and I'm gonna see whether there's a document online that I can fill out, hopefully in, you know, as a PDF that'll hold the data, and that I can submit online, and that I don't necessarily need to go somewhere. And I know, I'm just curious if, and I, whether it's beyond the scope of your company, to actually look at what some of the digital or technological options might be that would save space, physical space. I mean, I know you can go to a DMV kiosk at Albertson's, uh, to get your car registration, and you don't have to drive down and sit and wait at the DMV. So, um, I'd be curious at some of the technological options that might save some of this need for physical space.
Sure, and we looked into that at a high level. I will say that, um, while the world is generally going in that direction, what we found when we did our initial data gathering, we do actually have a statistic in the report from the utility billing group, was that even though there's the ability to pay digitally, the, the rate at which the customers in Boulder City have been going to that method is slower than what we're seeing nationally. So we didn't want to just suddenly say, all right, Boulder City, y'all gotta get modern and do it, you know, the new way. So we did want to accommodate for that kind of thing. Um, I also want to point out that the goal of a one-stop shop is not just customer service. It is, it is, first and foremost, it is a safety measure. Right now, the way that this building is built, it's very easy to just freely wander through the building, and there was an incident in this building because of the inability to secure it properly, and that's not of any fault of the police department. Um, and the one-stop shop is a solution that secures the building while maintaining that open government presence, and so that's why it has been a successful model. It has, as many of you noticed, been an unsuccessful model in certain implementations. It's, it's not perfect. It has a lot to do with how you end up managing that model, and you have to make it work for your citizens. So, you know, there, there are cities where the one-stop shop has a, a room with a kiosk in it. That would not be a good solution for Boulder City. It works for some places, it doesn't, it would not work here, I don't believe. So there are multiple ways to administer the one-stop shop, there are multiple ways to make it work for your community, and I think the solution that we have explored, um, has the ability to, um, kind of massage it to work for you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor? Mayor, just to add to what Councilwoman Bridges was asking about more moving to electronic versions, I know community development and Public Works, and probably multiple other departments are moving towards adding more to, uh, at least for permitting-wise. We have lots of people that come into Public Works trying to fill out permits, but we're moving to giving them the option to be able to do that online. So maybe that is an option to shrink a one-stop shop if we don't wanna, um, do what was recommended.
Something to shoot for there, uh, North Las Vegas is now doing video inspections, so you can video your water heater installation and have somebody at North Las Vegas City Hall goes, yeah, you did it right, so... They've, there's two or three that they're doing right now, so...
I'd have to hate them to say that you did it wrong after you've already done it.
Well, then, then you go next door to your neighbor's house and video that water heater. Councilwoman Hoskins?
Oh, I just have one question, one more question for you on the Emergency Aid building situation. You said that you didn't interview anyone from the museum to see if they wanted to move in there. Did you in, interview anyone in Emergency Aid to see if they wanted to move out?
No, our scope was only city functions. No, we, we, I think that would be the next step, right? And we, we want to talk to all of those people. It was, it was just a scope issue, frankly.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Folda?
I have a question for staff. Just, um, going through all these, I just had some ownership, cause I don't know the background of some of these buildings. Um, so I know that, um, we did have a visitors' welcome center, um, down at the bottom of the hill that I think it was run by LVCBA, and that I think we leased the land out to. It was closed down recently.
That was the State, uh, Information and Tourism Bureau that ran that particular facility that has closed. Um, and the state was looking at potentially bringing a satellite NHP office there. Um, but my understanding is the latest is that there is some discussion with the, uh, Boulder City Chamber of Commerce, um, occupying that space and potentially allowing NHP, I, I'm not sure. The function of the, of the Nevada Tourism Center has closed, um, and the state is looking at, uh, and my last understanding was that the chamber was in negotiations with the state about moving their functions there. They would be able to house some information, um, which they currently do at their location here downtown. Um, but as far as NHP, I'm gonna look to the chief to see whether or not that's, has farmed out. It is not farming out. So that's, that's as, as much as we know of what's going on there.
Do we own that land? Isn't that a bully sitter, but is that not a lease? Maybe Michael's standing up.
Let's have the community development director. He might have some more information. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm sorry, good morning, Michael Mays, Community Development Director. Yeah, the city sold the land to NDOT back in the 60s to create a rest center there as a gateway into Nevada, and, um, that has been the case since then. City manager is correct. The latest we know is discussions between the chamber and NDOT regarding utilization of that space and providing a substation for, uh, Nevada Highway Patrol.
Okay. Um, also, but no one really brought up, um, the building that Safe Nest was using. Is that still currently being used? It looked like, the report said none use, but then they also said there wasn't access to some of the rooms, so I didn't know if there was still some private use of it.
It is still in use, and we have been able to get, I believe, Jim's been, not this Jim, different Jim has been able to get access since that came out. Um, and we, um, did have a recommendation that a, in addition be added to the courthouse building that would basically require the demolition of that building, but we, um, much like the other nonprofits, we would want the city to work with them to find per new locations for those nonprofits, cause they, they're important to the city.
Do we know, uh, so how was that building? Was that Safe Nest put that building in, or is that a, just the city acquired that building? Does anyone know? Sorry.
I honestly don't know.
Okay. So we would need to look into that before we demolish it. Okay. Um, and then there was one other building, the Girl Scout Building, that's, um, housed over by, um, Broadbit Park. Um, is that leased, owned by them? How is, what's the ownership as well? It's owned by the Girl Scouts, and that's just a city lease?
That is owned by the Girl Scouts, and it is on city property, but it's not leased to them or anything, but they do own and maintain the building itself.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And last, the old animal shelter wasn't discussed either, um, maybe because it's not really a building anymore, it's just kind of open?
Um, we assessed the, the existing animal shelter and the functions that are there, and we recommended that they, they're, they're doing just fine where they are, so with no changes recommended as far as the old building is concerned. Um, did we assess that building? I don't, I don't think we assessed it either.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're not currently using that building for anything, so no, we didn't have them waste their time on that building.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Adams?
Um, I guess with regards to the current animal shelter, um, I did notice that there was a, you know, it seems to be in good condition, uh, lots of stuff. Uh, I know certainly, uh, Anne probably would, you know, uh, she, she, you know, loves what she, what she does and everything like that. Um, I've, I've taken a tour, certainly it seems like storage is an issue, um, just making sure that they have everything everywhere where it can be easily accessible and stuff like that. So, um, I'm hoping that's something that we do consider, uh, if everything is good, maybe making sure that we best, better utilize everything, uh, the space that, that is there. Um, but I know certainly, you know, it, it's great that it's good, but we can always make sure that things are the best that they can be, so I just wanna make sure.
Their only concern, I think, was that they don't have a proper quarantine room, but otherwise, they're doing, they're doing really well.
Right, yeah, the, the work that they do is, is...
It's pretty remarkable, actually. Their, their statistics were fantastic.
But ISO rooms are very important when it comes to animal treatment. I used to work at the animal hospital here in town, so I know how important that is because you don't have an ISO room, a proper one, you know, you do risk contamination, and, you know, then we have a problem on our hands, is, we all know what's going on in the real world today, so...
Right.
Uh, that's definitely something we need to consider.
We've also had some, uh, security issues up there recently. Um, StanTech wasn't aware of it, cause it's been so recent. Chief can expand on it probably, but, uh, there's been times where staff will be going into the, the back part of the building, going outside where the dog runs are at, and there'll be a homeless person or a transient basically standing right there. Um, and between the PD and Public Works, we're looking into addressing that.
I also heard at least of one issue where somebody, you know, that was their animal there, and they were very, they, as people do, they want their, they would like their pets, so, uh, certainly, security is something we need to take into consideration as well.
Okay. Anything else? Well, again, I thank StanTech for the report. I think that, uh, it's very professionally done based on the input you all were given. Uh, look forward to the next steps in this process. Uh, and with that, we will move then to our last public comment period. Thank you.
Judy DeShane, sorry I'm so slow, but too early in the morning, didn't have a chance to get going, really. At any rate, I just wanted to thank the council for the questions you've asked. It did, most of them answered a lot of my problems when I read the report, so I appreciated the thought that had to have gone in to, uh, coming up with your questions, and I appreciate staff and StanTech answering them to the best of their ability. I mean, we never get all the answers we want, but I do look forward to this being, um, in pub, public, you know, uh, workshops or whatever, so we can get more answers. The other thing I was wondering, is the city going to publish? I see the city manager there has one, a readable copy, because no, when I even tried to print it off my computer, there's no way I can print, you know, one that's big so you can actually read it, and like someone else said, you know, you sit there with your computer screen with a magnifying glass and putting on a pair of readers to see if anything will help, and it was very, very difficult to read that off the screen. But I want to thank you again for your astute questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Ray Turner, thank you. Um, I did have some other things that I intended to talk about earlier. Uh, one of, regards Public Works. When reading about Public Works needs and facilities, uh, neat requirements, um, I read over and over things like, uh, vehicle and equipment storage is beyond current capacity. Facilities are utilized beyond their potential. Covered and interior storage is beyond capacity. Primary access to Public Works on 500 Railroad Avenue, um, is adjacent to a historic residential neighborhood. There are concerns with deliveries made by semi-trucks. Large and heavy items are not easily received at this location and require assistance by staff. A secure location for after-hours delivery is not in place. Items susceptible to solder degrading, to damage from the sun are currently stored uncovered. Vehicles and equipment are double parked under canopies intended for one. Material and supply storage is located in various locations throughout the city, including at the LADWP building. Ideally, those items would be centralized with Public Works. However, the department also needs more distributed storage. There are currently no wash facilities for vehicles and equipment, so staff is using a power washer with a sand and oil separator. Um, so immediately on reading these things, I think to myself, what about the hangar? And what about that property down there? It's, it's a massive big property, and the hangar provides thousands and thousands of square feet of, uh, covered storage, uh, an excellent place to use for storage if we're in such a dire situation with Public Works, um, accepting deliveries from semi-trucks directly off the highway. It just seems to me that it's calling out for a Public Works depot perhaps, or something like that. Just think that should be considered, because we are looking for inviting, um, RFIs for uses at that property. I think the city would be well-served to keep that property in its ownership and to use it, and I think Public Works would be an excellent way to do that. Um, I want to get back to the LADWP building. Uh, it's my opinion that there is an obvious bias being demonstrated here towards the Red Mountain Choir and also to the museum. Uh, the executive director of the Red Mountain Choir is Rose Woodbury. Bruce Woodbury is the executive producer and also a board member. And the museum development officer is Leslie Woodbury. Now, what a coincidence. Um, it was stated earlier that non-city uses were not being considered when people had questions about, well, why couldn't this group go here, and why couldn't this group go there, blah, blah, blah. So why is the Red Mountain Choir and the museum being touted as a higher and better use for this building when they're not city uses? They're private nonprofit organizations, and they're headed up by family members from the ex-mayor Rod Woodbury. Um, I, there's demon, there's, there's bias being demonstrated here. I mean, you have to be blind not to see it. And I would just like, I just hope that, uh, going forward, that the city will, city will realize that we have new leadership, we have a new council, we have a whole new set of people here representing us, and I don't want those people to receive favorable bias either, and I know you all personally, so I don't have anything to worry about there, which is what I want. You know, I want fair, honest government, and the bias demonstrated here is not fair. Um, the LADWP building, I've heard people many, many times complaining about the entrance to the building, that it's not safe and it's hard to get up the steps. Judy, opening, open the door. And I had intended to reach out to Public Works and let them know that I believe that that door is hinged on the wrong side. If that door opened from the other side, there would be more than enough room. That entry was designed for that door to be hinged on the other side, and I don't know how many years people have been complaining about it, uh, and having trouble getting in there, but I would just ask if, you know, and I'm surprised it wasn't picked... But I would just ask if, you know, and I'm surprised it wasn't picked up because, you know, the study went on and on about safety, you know. So let's do something about that door. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll close public comment then. Again, thank you all for coming and for your comments, and we are adjourned.